The Board of Education is called back to order. Our first item of business after lunch, amendment to accreditation regulations. Scott Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we don't actually have an amendment for you yet. I was just going to tell you a little bit about what's coming. You may recall last month you approved us to send new accreditation regulations on to the Department of Administration and the AG's office for their approval before you formally adopted them. And within that draft of the regulations, in order for a school to have any level of accreditation, they had to be in good standing with the state board. And "in good standing" is defined as they have to either be in compliance with or working with the state board to be in compliance with all federal and state statutes and regulations. That's just kind of the catch-all that we created so that we would have some kind of a carrot and a stick, if you would, to ensure compliance with all of our rules under accreditation. Then it came to our attention that Aaron's Law, which you all remember was discussed quite a bit the past legislative session, having to do with mandatory training for teachers to recognize signs, potential signs of sexual abuse of children. Well, that didn't actually pass, so it's not law, but we still think, and I believe the state board still wants to work with schools to get that training to the teachers. So in essence, you will be creating your own version of Aaron's Law. So the only way we can do that is to actually put that in regulation, and that's what we're going to eventually bring you, probably in December or January. And the plan right now is the set of accreditation regulations that you first looked at, those are continuing through the process. I can tell you that Cheryl Austin in my department, she's still working with the Department of Administration to get those passed. She's going to be quite happy that I'm out of the office for the next three days to leave her alone so she can actually get that done. Once we do have an appropriate regulation to bring to you, then we're basically going to be playing catch-up, and we're just going to get those worked into the rest of your accreditation regulations so that you are adopting all of them formally all at once. Rather than waiting for this accreditation regulations to go all the way through the process, we're just going to be kind of playing catch-up. What are we waiting for? It's my understanding that there's a mental health advisory group. Kathy is the chair of that. We are hopeful or expecting some kind of recommendations out of that group, and that will be the basis and the language that we will add to your KISA regulations will largely come from that.
And Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe that we're interested in doing something specifically related to Aaron's Law, but are very interested through the Mental Health Advisory Committee to come up with a comprehensive program to deal with all sorts of adverse childhoods experienced in trauma-informed care. And Kathy, did you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, that's just what I was going to ask about because that, matter of fact, that's where I was at lunch, was meeting with, about our next meeting, which is next week. And one of the things that we're going to have some discussion, we did last time on Aaron's Law, and we're going to have some this next week too. And one of the, the goal will be somewhat in November, but then also in December, is to really look at what kind of recommendations are we going to bring to the state board. So hopefully we'll have recommendations in December, at the latest January, as far as the direction we want to go. So that's kind of the timeline we are working on. Then those recommendations, after they come here, can go to the legislature for their information also of kind of where we're going. And we do have legislative representatives on our advisory council.
Really, that was the entire purpose, was to let you all know that we hadn't intentionally forgotten anything that you wanted to include in your regulations. When the time is right, we'll, we'll get those added.
Yeah, I thought we intentionally, when we did the regulations, tried to not be that specific so we could have more flexibility. I mean, if we wanted to start down that path, we'd be writing into the regulations everything that's ever been required by this department. I mean, we've already said they can't be accredited if they don't comply with our, you know, with our requirements, and there's a whole long list of those. Why would we want to put that in regulation?
Yeah, you, actually, the requirements, any requirement that you want to hold a school accountable to has to be in regulation or statute somewhere, or you just can't use it as the, as the test. And the provisions that were covered by Aaron's Law and several other things that your group is looking at, they're not, they're not codified. They're not in regulation yet, so we have to put them somewhere.
Well, you better get ready because it's way more than Aaron's Law.
Yes, I understand that.
But so why are we just doing Aaron's Law? I mean, that doesn't make sense.
To clarify, and I apologize, I misspoke, it's not going to be just Aaron's Law. That was just kind of the one thing that triggered that, sorry, realized we did not get that. The phrase that I'd used before, the "in good standing," generally would have covered several, many of those provisions, but doesn't catch all of them. So whatever the advisory group comes up with that needs to be added, that's what the recommended, that will be recommended to be added to the accreditation regulations come January.
I see no other questions. Thank you, sir. Update on career and technical education. Who's talking to us?
Good afternoon. I'm Stacey Smith, Assistant Director of Career Standards and Services. And the Individual Plan of Study. Good afternoon, Chairman Porter and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present this annual update on career and technical education in Kansas schools. The Kansas State Department of Education CTE team continues to work diligently in the support of Kansas schools to support the State Board of Education's vision to lead the world in the success of each student. To that effect, KSDE CTE has a vision that all students will be engaged in quality and career pathways to prepare them for a lifetime of opportunities as productive and responsible citizens. Yeah. It's not on the bottom of the slide the way it is on mine. I apologize. In the board packet, I provided you with a few handouts, and on page two, I'd like for you to take a look at the KSDE CTE sunflower, which we developed with external partners to illustrate the career and technical fields that are available to Kansas students. There are three versions of this KSDE CTE sunflower, and I'll toggle back and forth between the three of them. The intention that Peggy and the committee had when they developed it was that this would be a tool that we could utilize to show relevance for career exploration across the K-12 system. And so the middle slide that I have up in front of you has some figures placed within the petals, and then we've taken away the names of the specific pathways on the outside. So this would be in a middle school hallway, and counselors could talk to students about the career fields without getting into the specifics of competencies, et cetera. And this third version, which is on the screen in front of you now, we had envisioned placing within elementary schools. They don't need to dig so specifically into technical exploration, but understanding what the world of work looks like shows them some of the opportunities that are available to them to explore their skills, interests, talents, and abilities. And I included the high school version in your packet because the print was small. It'll be easier for you to see the seven career fields, the 35 pathways that we support throughout the state in high schools and through articulation agreements into technical At a glance, the numbers for the pathways in the state of Kansas, we have added our 2017, 2018 total approved pathways are 2,736 pathways across the state where students are exploring their interests. We have about 78,931 participants in career and technical education. Concentrators currently around 5,366. Looking at the definitions for participants, concentrators, and completers, we will be, we have aligned our numbers of concentrators with the federal definition, so that number should be higher in the next round of reporting. CTSO participation is an important way that students practice engagement with organizations related to their career interests, and numbers at a glance show that we have over 23,000 students participating in our CTSO operations. Allows them to participate in organizations with like-minded individuals, look at the structure of those organizations, and become a voice within them. It's a way to participate collaboratively as well as competitively within an area that's of interest to them.
Do we have a question? Kathy Bush?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On that, yeah, the CTSO, educators rising, that's, has that been approved?
We don't have official numbers of participants for them. These are reported on last year.
Last year's numbers.
And they are not a, they're state-recognized, they're not state-sponsored at this point. And so I will check into those numbers, and I can get back to you with the number of participants that they currently have.
Okay.
That is going to be an important pathway for our students, particularly looking at teachers coming into the system, and whatever we can do to increase capacity is going to be a benefit.
Right, right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Ken, go ahead.
I may have missed some of the presentation, but I just had a question regarding how many schools are actually advising and counseling high school students in their career options and exploration and all that sort of thing. The reason for that is, I just was looking with a high school student, and I asked about, you know, what his goal was and what his study was, and he knew nothing about this. He said he had not been counseled yet, had any counseling or advising yet on choosing the career to follow or anything like that. So I'm just wondering how many schools are actually doing this yet, and what we need to do to expand it.
It's a great question. Out of our 286 odd school districts, about 285 of them have a CTE pathway. There are five schools in the state of Kansas that haven't, and we've spoken with a couple of them to extend our support if they're interested in adding the career pathways. Kathleen Mercer will present in a few minutes about the Individual Plan of Study and the capacity that we're developing to engage and support counselors, administrators, and teachers in those discussions around career interests. And I think she'll have some specific information, numbers, on meeting the needs of those districts.
Okay, thank you. I just have the sense that it may be more that, say, they have individual plans of study than actually do, and maybe it's just a lack of expertise yet in formulating them. I don't know.
I'll go ahead and move on to the next slide, which we've got the names of the Kansas CTE scholars. And so I don't have the name of the school next to them because I wanted to fit the information on one slide, make it transparent, but there is a handout in the packet that you were provided that identifies the schools that they are from, and so you can see your district's representation there. We are hoping to, we're fully promote the CTE scholars this year. We've got revised criteria, which is available on our website, and I can provide those links to you if you'd like to have more information about them. One of the things that we are looking at is collecting the career field information that the students are interested in and pursuing so that we can report that as well.
I have a question on that. How do they go about receiving this scholar? Because that's not very many school districts representing.
It's not very many schools, and one of the things that is a deterrent is there's no cash prize. When they see presidential CTE scholar, students rush to enter that contest. We have no cash stipend attached to this recognition opportunity. But what we hope to create is a celebration of student success at the local level where business and industry partners could turn around and identify opportunities to present scholarship as well. And we have streamlined the application process, and we're hoping to get that onto an online porthole so it's not tedious in the creation of the submittal packet.
Okay, so this goes out to the schools, not necessarily to the business people?
Correct.
But do the business people nominate the scholars, or do the schools?
The students apply to be recognized through the process themselves. Gaila Randall is our consultant who helped lead the committee on that, and she is available to take additional questions. I don't see any. Okay, thank you. We've got several people here to present as well. I have Kathleen Mercer, who will talk to you about the Individual Plan of Study. I'll come back up in a few minutes, particularly when we get to cluster review topics, and I'll stand for questions at the end of the presentation.
Hi. Hi, so I'm here today to present the Individual Plan of Study, an update on where we are with that. So most recently, what we did is we had an IPS roadshow. We went across the state and provided training to schools that had signed up to come in and get trained. What the training consisted of was they were given resources and information by two trainers, Joni Clark-Liker and Jody Grover. Now Joni is trained in career counseling. She's been a counselor for years, and Jody has also been a counselor, but she's more proficient in the career cruising side of things. So what they did is they sat down and went through the framework that a school might want to use to implement Individual Plan of Study. The people that were invited would be the principal, the counselor, teachers, anyone that was going to be on the IPS team trying to create that plan. So the first half of each session was going through all the resources available and how to set up the template for your school. And then the second half was an actual work session where they could sit down and construct that plan with the resources of myself, Joni, Jody, and any other KSDE consultants that were available. So that process has taken place. Through this process, we've also identified some additional needs. We were only able to have about six people from each school district come in, and some of our larger districts approached me and said, "We need to have the same access to the training, but if we have six people from our district, we're not covering each individual high school," right? Because they would need more. So we are in the process of setting up training for the larger districts and going out to their location. We're working with Joni and Jody to come up with what that's going to look like to serve those school districts and make sure that they have a framework for implementation as well. While they were at the session, we also asked them to complete a survey, and one of the questions was, "What level of implementation is your district?" Well, 66.2% are currently in implementing. That would mean the district has identified an IPS for students, and they've begun putting it together. They may not have even necessarily rolled it out to their students. They're working with their staff, they're setting up their system, they're determining the right process to use. Are they, are they going to have teachers as advisors? Are they going to just use counselors? Are they going to hire someone to come in and do the counseling with the students? 27.3% have already started the process, right? And they feel like they're in a transitioning place. So overall, a majority of our schools are either implementing or transitioning. Now, the reason they're using those phrases is because we put together an IPS rubric where they can self-assess, and we align that to the KISA model. That's not being used in evaluation from our part. It's just used at the school's level so that they can evaluate where they are in the process of implementation and maybe identify places that they need to work or where they're being successful. This information correlates, I believe, pretty clearly with how long the IPS process has been implemented in the district. So we have 37.7% that are at less than one year of implementation. 28.6 are one to two years, and then 26% would be more than two years. And so one of the reasons that we are not hearing from the students yet is probably because we have so many people who are still just getting started or just getting their feet under them. I know with my own child, who's a freshman in high school, the first I had heard from their school was right before parent-teacher conferences now, that they said, "We're going to lead, we're going to change our parent-teacher conference structure, and we're going to go over an Individual Plan of Study." Prior to that, there hadn't been much information. So I think what we're seeing is they've got the product in place, they've come up with the product, process, and now they're starting to implement. This process is not going to happen quickly if it is done with fidelity. It's going to take time to work into the school district. So Natalie is going to share with us an update on employability skills and that framework.
In the middle of that Kansas career cluster model, there's career success skills, and those are for all students, no matter what career cluster they're in, and they're categorized by workplace skills, applied knowledge, and effective relationships. In June, the Kansas Advisory Committee on Career and Technical Education endorsed the U.S. Department of Education's Employability Skills Framework, and you'll see in the middle of that, those three categories also. And in May, prior to that endorsement, we met with Dr. Patty Noonan from KU, and we went over the college and career competency wheel, and we crosswalked the 26 competencies within this wheel with the Employability Skills Framework that was endorsed for CTE by the Kansas Advisory Committee on Career and Technical Education. And in your packet is the crosswalk that Dr. Patty Noonan and a team in the Career and Technical Education Committee went over. We felt that if teachers had the resources from the college and career competency framework as well as the employability model, that those would be resources teachers could use for assessing the employability skills.
We have some questions, Jim.
Well, actually, it's for the IPS. Welcome back.
Sure.
Two things. Number one, you mentioned you have a rubric in terms of implementation. You know, are we going to be able to get a copy of that rubric?
Absolutely.
Okay, that'd be great.
And it has been vetted by an external group as well, and it was piloted by a number of counselors, so I'll be happy to get that to you.
Makes me happy. Thank you. Second, this might not make you happy. Okay. You mentioned that if it's going to take time to do this for fidelity, okay? There's a sense of urgency on the, on a part of the board for a lot of reasons, some of which have been discussed today and some which haven't, but if anything, Randy, and this is for you, you know, there's no delaying on this. Go to work. Get this done. We've been talking about IPSs now for almost a year and a half, okay, actively, and it distresses me to see some of the data I'm seeing up there. You know, this is not a leisurely walk down the road. Do it. Do it, or, you know, there's an accountability here that we're racing to the moon. We're not racing to, you know, the sunset. We're racing to the moon. So get the job done. I mean, put some pressure on the schools, and let's make this happen.
I agree.
You know, I don't want to hear about, and don't take this wrong, you know, that it's, it's going to take a little while. Do it. I know that, but it's going to take longer if we expect it to take a little while.
Right.
So no excuses. Get it done. Thank you.
And you know which, which schools say that they have not done anything?
Yes. We have 86% of the schools that have purchased the product or are using a product from our past survey, and this sampled 101 of our schools. So through this, we had gotten 101 school buildings sampled. This gave us a better, I think, a better flavor of what was happening in the, what's happening in the field. They're buying the product, but they're not necessarily getting it up and running. And we think that that's where we need to bring in more technical assistance in helping them figure out, "How do I implement this and get it, get it moving?" And I agree completely.
It's like Ken mentioned a few minutes ago. We have students that, and truly, you can implement something in school, and kids might not understand what it is because they use a different terminology. But, you know, I think Ken picks up a good point. If the students don't know what's happening, it's not happening.
Right. Absolutely.
You know, so, yeah, we, we have a sense of urgency. Thank you.
Yes, and I want to reemphasize, we do have a sense of urgency, and we're going to get there in, as in 10 years, or as Steve indicates, we need to do it before then. We need to move on. And you're the messenger, you know?
Absolutely. Like I said-
Yeah, don't take this as you've done something wrong.
No, I think it really reinforces that sense of urgency and the fact that we can identify areas that we can provide technical assistance, then we need to be providing that. Absolutely.
Sally.
Mr. Chairman, you asked part of my question. The other part of my question is, I would really like to see a list of districts that you are fearful that have not come to any trainings. Can you do that?
Yes.
Okay, because if they're in my district, I want to light a fire.
Okay. Absolutely.
So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, I think, I think that maybe more than just Sally would like to-
Yeah.
Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The training that you've done recently, I assume, is mostly for the implementers, the counselors, whoever else in the district has kind of assigned that task. Have you also done training or provided information, like for instance, at the Council of Superintendents? Maybe you're going to present at the KSB conference so that superintendents, principals, and school board members are maybe a little more up to speed on what's going on because you may have the implementers, but you also need the decision-makers more involved so they can light that fire because this, you know, IPS is critical not only to CTE, but some of the other things that we're doing.
I think that's a great suggestion. We have presented numerous places, but most of it has been to the implementers. Now, principals have participated in our workshops alongside with the counselors, but I don't believe that, I don't know, Jay might have presented previously to superintendents if I wasn't, you know, there at the time, but I have not personally presented above the principal level. And we have also presented to the post-secondary side to let them know our kids are coming with an IPS, to try to work that side of it too, so.
Yeah, I just think if you could get in front of some of those decision-makers, because they're going to drive that work at the building and get the implementers to implement, but if the decision-makers don't really understand, I think, then when the implementers go back, they hit roadblocks.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the questions I see right now.
We just completed the five-year review of the Business Management and Administration Cluster. We had a great review committee. It consisted of eight secondary educators, all different sizes of schools and across the state. We had two post-secondary members, one from Kansas State University and one from Forte State. We had business and industry members. We met face-to-face in September and February. And this is the design sheet after reviewing. In red are the changes. The first thing that we did, we changed the name of the pathway. It was Business Entrepreneurship and Management and Industry Recommended Business Management and Entrepreneurship. In red, a course, Business Communications, was recommended to be required for pathway approval. Business Economics was currently in that spot. It's still able to be taught, and we feel very strongly it should be, but it is optional. In reviewing the competencies and the other- In reviewing the competencies and the other courses, the review committee felt that there was a lot of economics within some of those other courses. We also added Engineering Design and Development and Consumer and Personal Finance. With this being the entrepreneurship pathway also, a lot of the courses on the right side, the Supportive Entrepreneurship Technical, there used to be a two-credit limit on the optional technical courses, but that was removed. Districts said they felt that students, no matter what their interest, they hated to be confined to just two credits. So schools may choose however many of these courses so that it would promote the interest and the engagement of more students. And finally, at the bottom in red, it says Business Essentials may be integrated with computer applications. When we reviewed Business Essentials, we visited with Stacy Smith, who has the Computer Applications course, or he did in his pathways. We felt the competencies overlapped. And we felt that if districts chose to integrate those two courses with the business content using the software applications, that that would be a situation that they may choose to do so. So summary, the name change, Business Management and Entrepreneurship. Business Communications is required. Business Economics is optional. We removed the two-credit limit of technical supportive courses. And we added Engineering Design and Development and Consumer and Personal Finance to the optional. We reviewed the competencies in all the courses and we made sure that common career technical core practices were added. We looked at the national model and we followed the Business Management and Administration Cluster and the General Management Pathway. We added project management competencies throughout the pathway because we wanted to encourage project-based learning using project management as a tool to facilitate project-based learning. We also added competencies that addressed employability and career success skills and integrated those with the Individual Plan of Study. So we're encouraging students to place items in their electronic portfolio. And so that was the five-year review of that cluster. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Peggy Torrance, and I am the consultant. One of the cluster areas that I deal with is the law of public safety and security. And we also went through our five-year review last year and made, you know, it's, you know, we, like Natalie's and like all of them, we have business industry, people on our committee. We have high school teachers. We have post-secondary instructors. But it gets a little scary when your business industry people walk in the room wearing uniforms and carrying guns. You know, they're, they're a little more serious than maybe some of the others. But we had a really good group. We actually had some chief of police and some fire chiefs on the committee that helped us out with that. We have two pathways in this cluster. One is for the Emergency and Fire Management Services. And the other is the Corrections, the more law enforcement side of the field. So for Emergency and Fire Management Services, we added three new courses and updated competencies to match the newer national standards. As you may recall from previous presentations, when we teach like the fire science to teach the students to get the firefighting certification, we have to have those courses taught by certified firefighter instructors and they have to use the national competencies. So we updated what we had in our system as was their older set of competencies. So we updated to match their newer ones. In the Corrections Law Enforcement Pathway, we also added three new courses and we made no changes at all to the pre-law strand. So if we look at the design sheets, this is the Emergency Fire Management. What we did was we, they decided that EMT, it was difficult to get it really taught sufficiently in one year. So they took the EMT course, which was a one-credit course at the technical level, and they added an EMT II course at the application level. So now those students take EMT coursework for two years to sit for that exam. We also added the Hazardous Materials for the First Responder Course at our middle technical level there. And then we added, I think it's the first-ever PhysEd class for a CTE pathway, the Public Safety Physical Education Course. What the firefighters told us was that we're doing a really good job of teaching the students the skills, but they could not pass what they call the CPAT test of physical strength to actually be hired in the field. So with their help, we've designed a specialized physical education class that is specifically created to train students to pass that CPAT test. And in the other pathway, like I said, we didn't make any changes to the pre-law strand on the left-hand side because we actually just added that strand a couple of years ago. So it hasn't been five years since we created that. On the law enforcement strand side, we again added that Public Safety Physical Education Course. We added the Hazardous Materials for the First Responder Course, the same two that were in the other pathway. And then the other new course that we added here was a Forensic Science II. Previously, we just had the Forensic Science I course. And our teachers that were teaching that, as they've gotten into it and really gotten into it, they love it. And they said, "There's just so much. There's just too much in that field to teach in one year." And they had all these other topics they wanted to teach. So we made an option for a Forensic Science II class. And those would mainly be for students that instead of wanting to go right into, you know, being a security officer or a police officer, are going to want to take like the four-year college route and actually go into forensic science to work in labs and that kind of stuff. So any questions on that?
I don't see any. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
As you can see, a fair amount of the work that we do in CTE relates to pathway maintenance as well as to initiatives going forward. Part of my responsibility last year was going through the Information Technology Cluster and reviewing those competencies. We've hired a new Information Technology Education Program Consultant, and he's here with us today. And I introduced Stephen King and asked him to stand and be recognized. He'll be working with that cluster going forward and making any additional corrections or tweaks to those pathways to serve school districts' needs.
We have a question from Ann Ma.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We kind of went by the CTE scholar thing. And I know most people wouldn't know what to ask about it. But the CTE scholar is really hard to get. And I think what a lot of schools don't realize is it's one of the things they could use to present evidence of technical skill attainment in their schools by the number of kids who are CTE scholars, you know, on their school surveys. And, but if we have time, I'd like Gayla to tell a little bit about what it takes to be a CTE scholar and when those applications are due. Do we have time for that? Okay, thanks.
I'll make this really quick so we can get to that. There's a cluster review timeline in the process that we went through. A great representative cluster review committee. And I have a map which shows their general location and the distances that they traveled to share with the group as we developed those competencies. Information Support Services Pathway is the first one listed up here. Not many changes in the structure of the design sheet. When you examine the competencies of the internal courses, that's where you notice the significant changes. A lot of the language that had been placed in those related to computer languages that are less prevalent and didn't recognize new languages like Python that are coming into the teaching environment. So revisions at the competency level for the most part and reduction of duplication. Network Systems Pathway is probably our smallest of the information technology pathways. There are probably about 12 schools that do a really great job with the network systems. It's a pretty technical field. And our larger urban areas provide greater access to those pathways. There are numerous courses being developed. Washburn Tech would be an example of one that is now floating in online delivery content for upper-level IT courses. Programming and Software Development Pathway absorbed the Computer Science Engineering Pathway. We took several of those key courses. In the introductory level, you see Intro to Computer Coding and Intro to Physical Computing. Those are courses that were taken from the Computer Science Engineering Pathway and brought into the Programming and Software Development Pathway. And Web and Digital Communications is our largest of the IT pathways. Deals with webpage design, computer graphics. A lot of the courses that are maybe taught by the business teacher next to their accounting or marketing and are great resources for our students. If you have additional questions about the IT competencies, I can certainly get more information to you.
Mr. Chairman, I have two questions, but they're about the overall CTE. Are you ready for that? Is this the end?
We sure are. If we would like to stop and go through the CTE scholar information, then we can get that out of the way and then I can answer general questions.
Do we wait, Jim?
Yes, that'd be fine. The CTE scholar is a great promotional opportunity for our school districts. Washburn Tech would be an example of a post-secondary that's done a really great job with their signing day. I mean, they have seniors from across the state sign their letter of intent to come and study in a career and technical education pathway. And that kind of promotion in our communities is designed to change the narrative of what college and career education is about. And Gayla can speak to that specifically.
Good afternoon. The Kansas CT Scholar, which is what we reference our Kansas-level award to not be confused with the Presidential Scholar Program, actually has some similarities but a lot of differences. I do want to briefly just mention the reason we didn't have a high number last year is really we were going to wait until this year to roll it out. But we felt it would have been not appropriate because we would have had a whole year of seniors that didn't have the opportunity to be recognized. And so the schools did not have a huge amount of time in which to apply. But I had personally talked with a number of individuals at the service centers to get word out to the schools and said, "We know this is a short timeframe, but we wanted to provide you at least the opportunity for this year's seniors to be able to roll forward." The CTE scholar, it was actually been about a two-year process. And we were looking at the lens of recognizing a whole child in this situation, especially looking at the new vision. How could we recognize the technical skill set, the leadership, the civic engagement, the career focus in a manner that was meaningful to students? And so we really focused more on the meaning for the student than we did the recognition in outside groups such as business and industry and post-secondary. That is something I've started to work on this year. We realized then there was some information that we didn't ask for last year that we've edited for this year's submission, one of which is their area of study. Last year, we asked for a number of things, which I'll very briefly run down. And then we asked them to do a short career summary statement, where they see their future would be and how they learned from their current technical education experience in high school. And we didn't really have a way to quantify the career fields that they were interested in. So we don't have that data, but we will in 2018. There are seven criterion that students have to reach, and they are the ones that are submit, are to complete and submit the application. Again, to designate that student who indeed has reached that whole child development that we're working for with the new vision. One of the areas is having at least three credits in career and technical education coursework. Another is to reach a 3.5 GPA in their career and technical education coursework. That is not to minimize their achievement in the academic realm, but we wanted to recognize those students who really excelled in the more hands-on, applied sciences. In addition, they are required to do and demonstrate leadership skills and have a letter from a mentor or a person who's witnessed that leadership. They have a certain number of workplace hours they need to achieve. And at that point, then, they need to have documentation of technical skill set attainment. And then lastly, a number of civic engagement opportunities and hours that they've completed where they are the leader, and then summarize it in a short summary about their career. So as Ann had mentioned, it is a very well-rounded, seven criterion areas that they need to address. I do know a couple larger schools, including Wichita Public Schools, has an internal award system that they've now modified to align to the Kansas CT Scholar. They didn't have anyone submit last year. Didn't really even encourage it, they told me when I talked to Kathy Maung and Jim Means because I was concerned why Wichita, with all those students, didn't have any buddy completed. And they said that they wanted to modify and bump up what their local recognition included so that they would have a well-rounded number of students that could then submit this year. So those, that's in a nutshell where we are for 2018. The biggest issue we have now is we recognize with a commemorative pin. And how many do we order? And so, and the budget to be able to do that. We did have a certificate that had Randy's signature on it. And I understand that they, the students really honored, felt honored to receive that. And they were given the commemorative pin to wear or to have in their memorabilia from their high school years. So we tried to do something that we hoped was meaningful. And then this year, build on that, we do have some post-secondary schools that are looking into providing scholarships. And the authorization of being able to apply for that scholarship is you would have to have been a CT Scholar in order to apply. And we do a business and industry somewhat that are interested, especially in the trades, to find out those individuals. But since we didn't ask for that particular documentation, we didn't have a list to really provide them. But again, we're moving forward. It's a wonderful example. And our hope is that every CT student would look at this as something they can achieve. And it would be wonderful if we would have several thousand students actually receive this award. I will have to work here 24/7, so I'd like to have a sleeping dorm, if I could, installed. No, just kidding. But it's very exciting to have something that we feel students are starting to value, schools are seeing as something that can encourage students to be successful and to move forward and in the realm that we're all working in, which is current technical education.
Thank you very much. And I'll have to discuss the norm with the commissioner.
Okay. As far as application, normally, our application is right after Christmas with a closure in March. I'm working with IT right now, and that is keeping us from actually having a hard opening date. But information have been shared with the schools already. And we do have a two-page fact sheet, which I'll make sure that you receive before you leave in the meeting here this, today and tomorrow. I'll make sure that you get a copy of that.
Hey, Sally.
Thank you. It's not on the...
Stacy. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have two questions. One, it may be terminology, okay? When you say you have developed courses in these different pathways, are you really saying that for webpage design, we have set that, we have written standards for that to be? And then, so all these courses are really a set of standards for like webpage design?
Correct. Standards versus competencies, it's a little bit different verbiage in how they're written. But yes, they're a course competencies. And so not providing curriculum or scope and se, scope, maybe not sequence within some of the pathways.
Okay, and in designing the tests for the students to take afterwards?
Tests would be...
Is that the right term?
At the local level. We wouldn't, they could demonstrate competencies and the teacher could observe those competencies and evaluate them. But most of the tests, I mean, if we're... and evaluate them, but most of the tests, I mean, if we're going to talk about an end-of-pathway assessment...
Yes, that's what I mean.
...or an end-of-course assessment are usually developed at the local level or through a third party.
I thought we had some nationally.
Well, we have the CPAS assessments, which are developed at KU, which overlap with a lot of our pathways. And then, let's see, if I were to go back to information...
Has the CPAS? No. National, okay. So, I wasn't too far off. Okay, industry standard, okay. That was a clarification I needed. And then, the second one is an idea.
Okay.
I used to serve on that board, and I really thought that we had some very sharp business and industry people at the table, even though I feel like we're lacking in my area. I think that the people on there are very interested. Most of them participated when I was there. But I wondered if in our vision, and in trying to get it out to companies and corporations, if this isn't a place where the CTE Advisory Board could help us? Because if they would get us in to their trade conventions, to where we could speak to others in their industry, so they know the schools are looking for people for trade and for, what are those called, when they go out and they go into that business for a while? Internships. That we are looking for internships. This vision is really lacking getting out in the public and to our business and industry. We've got large corporations willing, but if you're in rural and in some of that area, we need the people in those industries to know what we're trying to do. And the locals need help with that, too. So, I'm just saying that I see that's a place that this board could become, and there's nothing like one businessman talking to another.
Thank you very much for the suggestion. I did present in front of a group of Kansas and Missouri superintendents at the Kansas-Missouri Leadership Forum in Kansas City last week, and we talk about getting into the communities. I mean, the largest employer in many of our communities are the superintendent of schools because the schools have the largest employment base in some of those small communities. And so, by definition, if we get in front of them, it's practically an invitation to the Chamber of Commerce and spreading the word throughout the communities.
I think we need to go to the Chamber of Commerce. Superintendents have so much to do right now. We need to get to the employers. That's part of it. We can't, just being in front of school people doesn't cut it. Time is over. We have got to collaborate with more than our little circle, our silo. And I think this committee, using those business and industry people, plus, they are committed to this, or they wouldn't show up for the meetings. And so, they probably would like something to do. I'm sure.
Thank you. We have three more questions, and then we're going to have to move on. Jim?
The scholar recipients that we have listed here are last year's. Yeah, that's what we saw last year, because, you know, I was going to say Newton sweeping again. Newton and Enman are just cleaning up here.
I have a little bit of background information on that.
Well, so do I. It's the instructors. Somebody's taken this and said, "I'm going to make this work in the school," you know? And I've contacted several schools, some of which last year, and we had this kind of same conversation. I don't remember what time last year, but I think I was still sitting in that seat. And this is a good start, you know, as I said last year, but there's only basically 20 schools represented, and there's three schools that dominate the number. And it's really an instructor-based, you know? Jim Means in Wichita is, you know, he's got a lot to do, and he oversees it, but it's really the instructors that are going to be, if they buy into this, you know? That's my thing there, and I would look for, I'd look for at least double or triple the number of participants this next year, you know? And quite frankly, I think our award's got a little higher than Wichita's award, so I'm going to tell Means to get with this program and get in it. That's their decision. The other thing, my other question, though, is related to your curriculums, and this goes for all of them. We've sat up here at the board, and we're talking about project-based and, you know, looking at alternatives to just traditional classroom experiences, and I don't see that in your curriculum alignment, you know? And where's the projects? And if there anything, where's the projects in Career Tech Ed? You know, can it get in an alternative way? Does it have to be only as instructor or only in a classroom? Or are there other ways that they can demonstrate the competencies that we're looking for? And then, also, Sally mentioned internships and job shadowing, and I don't see that up there.
They're embedded.
They're what? They're what?
They're embedded.
Oh, good. Good. How do I know they're embedded? Oh, you just told me they're embedded. Okay. I don't see it up there. And that should be a standalone. I mean, where's the, where's the job shadowing and internships? I mean, what I'm going for, these are the things that we're talking about at the board table. And if I have to discern through embedded and, you know, it's over here, I, as one board member, would like to see projects, student projects, and internships and job shadowing, on-the-job training involved.
All application-level courses have workplace opportunities built into them. For example, I work with the transportation cluster, and those application-level courses are the courses where people from the community actually bring cars into the school shop, and the students work on those cars. Our construction classes, they're out building houses, they're, you know, doing local projects, building park benches, you know, whatever it is. But all of those application-level courses have opportunities written into the competencies that are workplace-based.
I'm a high school principal, and I didn't even see that when you...
Yeah.
So, how somebody who's not even in education going to see that?
Well, if they looked at the competencies that are associated with each one of those classes, they would see those.
Okay. I guess I'm going to just point out that most people aren't going to look at the competencies. You are. I'm just saying, you know, I'd want to see more alignment from where we are, you know? Even if it's just a statement, they get them through the competencies or in there. Your physical one is real nice. When I ran a fire law program, you know, first thing we did was tell them what ladder they had to climb and how much weight they had to bring up, and there's no reason for you to continue in the program if you can't go up that ladder and bring that weight up, you know, and get back down. Just isn't going to happen, you know? Yeah, those kinds of on-the-job training and experiences, you know, help define better for the students as well as for the general public and our expectations for our schools about what we're doing. So, yeah, what you have is great, but I guess I'm just a little bit more direct, you know, about, you know, that there are projects that kids could do, present, build, whatever, and gain those competencies, and someplace jumping out at me in strong terms, internships, job shadowing, and on-the-job training, so...
Jim, can I speak to that just a second? What you're looking at is not a document for public consumption. This is what they send to schools to let them know, okay? So, if what you're saying is, "We need something for public consumption that's more descriptive," it could be developed, but that's not this document. Schools know what this is.
Okay, I'm going to go one step further, Ann, and, you know, when I say public consumption, I'm using public in a general way.
Yeah.
Even the teachers and the people who are in the field.
But the educators know what this is, and they know how to use it, and they know where to go find it.
If they did, we'd be having more of it.
Well, we have a lot of it.
I just want to build a, I want to be more direct. I won't want to, I just want to be more direct. It's not that it's not doing it, but I just, in the buildings, having been in a building, if it's not direct, it's not happening. Because if this was, if they jumped on this when it came out last year, this is great. This is a great award. You know, we had 20 schools fill it out.
Well, again, that's...
First year.
First year, and they had a short timeframe.
I understand.
Yes. But I really expect closer to 500 this year.
I, well, I'll tell you what, that would be a killer. That would be great. That would be great. Thank you.
Well, this morning, we had a presentation by the Coalition of Innovative Districts. And sitting on that...
Dana, Candace asked if you'd just speak up into the mic. I can't hear you. Thank you.
Sitting on that board and actually hearing what they were talking about, they have a major concern that if they're a small district, they're not able to offer many of these items. But yet, they have students who, that's their interest. So, I guess I'm asking that this advisory committee look at ways that every child in the state has access to these opportunities, because that's what they were talking about. I know that you're looking at putting a pathway in various regions around, here being one pathway, and over here is another, and the way I understand it, and that isn't what they're interested in. They want their kids to have the same opportunities that Blue Valley does. So, not every child will be interested. It may only be one child. But we also, Ann and I, talked about the possibility of adding one of the members of that committee, or to that committee, one of the members of the Board of Innovative School Districts, because they can explain to you more specifically what, specifically those that are from smaller districts, what their big concerns are, and they know they can't afford to offer everything. But if there's a way for us to make sure that it's available for every child, that would address their concerns. And I think also would, if they're a part of the group, making some of these decisions, they can explain to the members what their specific concerns are in their area.
Yeah, I'm very excited to work with Fredonia. I've got an appointment on the book scheduled to go down November 8th and work with Mr. Chart, presenting information about the IPS and about how to revitalize their career in technical pathways. And so, we'll look at how we can bring them in and support what they're trying to do with the recognition of student competencies, individual achievement within their region according to their particular concerns. And so, it's very much on our radar. We need to move the needle there.
And it's not just Fredonia.
Correct.
Talking Marysville is really the first person who mentioned it. So, I'm just sharing, having sat on the board and listening to their concerns, and I'm just sharing it with you. And if there's a way to include them in some way on this advisory committee, it would be helpful, I think, if one, if the board could appoint someone to sit on that committee.
We can sure take a look at what the bylaws are for the organization and how we get them involved, whether they're an advisory member or a panel participant, or we'll get them involved.
And I think advisory would satisfy them at this moment, but...
Thank you.
But thank you.
We need to move on. Ann, this will be, and this will be the last question.
Yeah, I was just going to follow up on what Sally had mentioned about getting in front of business people. We meet the same day that the Workforce Summit happens in January, and I noticed this year, we adjourned, and we went over there, and like, none of the business people seemed to know we were doing anything in high school. The whole focus is on post-secondary. So, we kind of re-engaged with Eddie Estes, and this year, at the Workforce Summit, we're going to have a panel discussion in front of the entire group. Hopefully, we'll have a booth. Can we have a booth? And we're also going to give an award to somebody, like we did, like, oh, I know, quite a few years ago, we gave an award to Joe Glassman for his, you know, participation in Tech Ed at the secondary level. So, it's a really great opportunity for us to re-engage, because I think all those people there are going to, business people are going to be interested in what we're doing. But to the extent there are other industry groups like that, conferences, we need to be at all of them, because Sally's right, we've got to get in front of more business people and let them know the opportunities we have for them.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember if Cloys helped present at the State Board meeting last year. There was a representative of the KACCTE panel, or advisory panel, here, and they should have been included in this today as well. And I apologize for going over on our time limit.
That's your fault, not yours.
Well, this is kind of a combination of two meetings. In the past, we've done the presentation of the Career Cluster Reviews in August and the annual update in October, and so, we've got two things that we kind of mashed together. So, I apologize if it was information overload and always available to answer any of your questions.
Yeah, I have some questions, but I'm going to ask them later.
Okay, I'll be around.
And that, we received Kansas Curricular Standards for, oh, by the way, thank you.
Thank you.
See, Kansas Curricular Standards for English and Language Arts, Suzanne Myers and Brent Wolf. In what capacity are you here today, Dr. Wolf, since you have several?
As a committee member.
Chair. Co-chair. I'll remember. Okay. I am Suzanne Myers. I'm the English Language Arts and Literacy Consultant here at the agency, and we're here today to present to you as a receive item our Kansas Standards for English Language Arts. I am joined today by Dr. Brent Wolf. He was one of two of our English Language Arts co-chairs. Our other co-chair fell in love and moved to Ohio, and so, she is not here today, but she was chairing our writing committee, our, we had two subcommittees, so she was chairing our writing committee, and Brent was chairing our review committee. So, he is joining me here today, and together, we're just going to walk you through what the teachers ended up with for our English Language Arts standards. So, I'll let Brent start us off here.
Good afternoon. I was afforded the great opportunity to be on the Standards Review Committee, and that would be the second committee. The first committee was the Writing Committee, and they initiated the standards, and they proposed what they would suggest of the changes and the direction that they were to go. And the standard, the review committee, we kind of were like their proofreaders, kind of see where their direction was, what their ideas were, and how we would merge. So, they met without us first for several meetings, and then we came and met just with us, and then we had a meeting together. And after we came to a consensus, then we had seven public meetings across the state of Kansas and kind of a listening tour for teachers, community members, principals, students to get some feedback from what they noticed in the standards, what they wanted in the standards, what they didn't want in the standards. And here were the locations of those and the attendance that we had at each of those. We also presented conferences around the state. Just recently, the KSDE conference was there for discussion of, rough draft of our standards. Just recently, the KSDE conference was there for discussion of rough draft of our standards. And then we also had a feedback format on online and paper available. And then emails came in as well for reviewing what our rough draft was. We broke that down into the types of people that were concerned and shown and gave us information about our standards. And that graph is before you. On the review committee, we had district administrators all the way from pre-K teachers. And so we know based off of lots of research and piggybacking on your vision that all of our standards, because these standards are pre-K 12, that we needed a wide variety of constituents and we didn't want just to have high school English teachers creating the English standards. And so here are, here's the makeup of that. So there were lots of questions that came up and a great robust discussion. But as a teacher on this and seeing the final document that you have seen, I think it is user-friendly for teachers and educators and parents and students and the public to know a, as a springboard of where the standards are in Kansas English classrooms. With that, Suzy's going to be back to talk more about those standards.
So we wanted to highlight some of the important questions that were raised in the review and then that kind of show you how the final document or the document that we're presenting to you today, possibly not the final document, but how it changed as a result of the review. So number one was this question of who are these intended to serve? Who is going to be accessing these? Who are they written for? And of course, one answer, as Brent said, was educators. The teachers on the committee were very concerned about the standards being a document that teachers would actually use in their instructional planning and not something that would be printed out, bound in a three-ring binder and put on a shelf somewhere. And so that was very much in their minds as they were developing what they did. Also, parents, there are aspects of this document that parents could look at and read and see, okay, this is what my third grade child should be doing in English Language Arts. Here's some, you know, things that I should expect to see or could expect to see, things like that. Students, possibly, they are not written. So for example, the kindergarten standards were not written so that kindergarten students could look at the standards and know what they were to be doing. But in the sense that they're served to, they're intended to serve the students. And then, of course, the public, just to give the public an idea of what they should expect to be happening in their local schools. One really interesting thing that came out of the review was that teachers are still very in the mind, very much in the mindset of our old accountability system in that there was a lot of fear, and I can speak to this myself, being a teacher who taught and assessed grade and assessed area, being handed the language art, the 10th grade Language Arts report and being made to feel as though that was my responsibility alone as the only person in that district who taught that. So some of the comments that came in were about, so I'm going to be responsible for, you know, the whole of this development and the student. And that was a really interesting, interesting thing that we grappled with, that this, and I think the board and the goals and everything is sort of heading in this direction too, that this is really about students. It's not about assigning blame to certain teachers, that these are about Kansas students and the development of these skills in Kansas students and that we'll be responsible for that, but not any one particular teacher. This was another big thing that came to light, that by text, and this word text has many different meanings. It doesn't necessarily mean just a book, a novel, a short story, a poem. It could be any number of things that students view, look at, read in a broad sense and interpret in some way. So it could be a video, it could be a graphic, it could be a picture, it could be a painting, any number of things. So the standards really take a broad view of this word text. So you can keep that in mind as you're reading through. This was the main reason why our standards took so long to get together. As I said, the teachers were really interested in making this a document that teachers, especially inexperienced teachers, first-year teachers or teachers who go into a building that has no curriculum, that they're not provided any resources, or very few resources, or little assistance in understanding those resources. They wanted those teachers especially to be able to look at the standards document and use it as a resource to show them what good instruction is supposed to look like in their classroom. And so the, sort of the prompt that teachers were using and developing these statements was if I were to walk into the best example of this standard being taught at whatever grade level they were working on, what could I see happening in that classroom? And so that's the spirit in which these statements were created. And you'll see those in the expanded view that I'll show you here in a minute. This is another piece that is brand new to these standards. Previously, we had what were called anchor standards. And the very first meeting convening of the writing committee, they said, you know, sometimes those are really vague for teachers. They don't always know what that means. And so they developed, they kept a lot of the language of the anchor standards, but they developed the intent of the anchor standards. So we had these two anchor standards essentially, one that was the anchor standard and one that said, and here's what the anchor standard means. And as I was out and about, I thought, that's really kind of stupid. Why don't we just, you know, tell people what it means in the first place instead of having this one statement and then another statement saying what it means? And that came out in the review too, in the public review, that they were like, I'm not really sure what the meaning of this is. And so as a result, it sort of got merged into a single statement. And this is how it really connects to the board goal of graduation. That statement now says Kansas High School graduates can. And that appears on every page of the expanded view for every standard so that in third grade or fifth grade or kindergarten even, teachers can look at that standard and see, okay, what am I working toward? That Kansas High School graduates can. And it has that statement that connects to that specific standard. So here are some specific things and comments that came directly from the reviewers. And this compiles all the reviewers. So in the seven public review sites, the online review, people who just emailed me, all of those things. So we created, the committee created these ELA practices. There are five of them. They're designed to provide big picture goals for students. And the reviewers liked those a lot, but they didn't like that they were on every single page of the document. So initially, the teacher said, we want to have those on every page just to remind everybody kind of where we're going, big picture. And the reviewers really hated that. They didn't like that at all, just took up space. So the other thing was that they also wanted some context for those. What's the meaning of those? What purpose do they serve? And so in the version that you are going to see, there's a page with the practices on it and there's a one-page explanation just providing some content, context for those practices. The addition of the students could statements, these are obviously brand new. The reviewers spoke highly of them. They thought they would be really helpful for, for teachers and parents, the public. So that was really affirming to the committee because they worked really hard developing those. The addition of the progression for each standard. So this is something that our standards used to have where when teachers were looking at them, they could very easily see what students in the previous grade were doing with respect to that standard and what students in the next grade were doing with respect to that standard. And that sort of went away and the teachers really missed that. And so at the bottom of our expanded view of the standards, the teachers put that progression back in. So for every single standard, teachers are now able to see what does that standard look like in the previous grade and what does that standard look like after? The one exception to that is for the 11 and 12 grade band, that they don't have the, you know, what's this look like after 12th grade? However, we were able to draw from the early learning standards, Kansas early learning standards, and include those in the kindergarten progression so that kindergarten teachers can look and see what's happening. Really excited about that because it just creates a more cohesive feel that, you know, we're not on different pages here, we're speaking the same language, so. There are multiple ways to view the standards depending on your desired level of detail. So reviewers really liked that the document was easy to navigate. They found the different views really helpful and useful. They could see them being useful for school administrators, for example, who just kind of want to see, okay, just tell me straight, what are, what are the standards? And then really useful also for teachers who needed to dig a little deeper into what it was that they were going to be doing. Our previous reading standard 10 addressed quantitative complexity of a text. So that referred to Lexile Band or an ATOS score, some kind of quantitative measure of how complex a text is, which is related to the complexity of the vocabulary, sentence length, word length, cohesiveness, you know, all that kind of stuff that goes into that quantitative measure. The teachers were kind of disturbed about that because we all know there's more to a text than its Lexile score. Sometimes students are reading about really complicated or, or complex or difficult topics that they're not, you know, they need to have a certain level of maturity in order to handle that. And so they wanted to revise that standard 10 to make it more realistic in terms of the things that teachers are really looking at when they're selecting texts for kids to read. Previously, we had this Kansas 15%, and you knew which ones they were because they had little sunflowers by them. They were, they were in our standards, but they were kind of separate from our standards. And so those 15% were absorbed into the English Language Arts practices and also into the grade level standards. And that was not really something that the reviewers commented on at all. So we're just leaving it how it was in the draft that went out for public review. Some of this as reminder, there will be updated front matter, so you're not really voting on peripheral things to the standards. I'll show you the view that will be most helpful to you as you're looking at the language of the standards and what you'll actually be reviewing for vote. But that front matter will be completed just to sort of explain and situate the standards in our current context. The second bullet was really interesting. The teachers had discussions about specific authors. Really, there was only one Shakespeare that was included in our previous standards. And there was a lot of discussion about teachers wanting to develop really engaging courses for students like, we want a short course on sports literature, or we want a course about, you know, something else that they thought that, you know, they had a population of students who would really be interested in that. And they were having a hard time if the standards said, but, you know, the students must have a Shakespeare, whatever. That, that they were sort of trying to fit Shakespeare into this course, that it didn't really make any sense to include it in. And so they thought, not that they're not valuing Shakespeare, you know, that author, but they did not want teachers' hands to be tied because of the standards. So that was the thinking on that. It was also not a major focus of the reviewers' comments. And the in-person comments about that change were positive. So they seemed to understand, nobody was all up in arms about the removal of Shakespeare. There was a lot of discussion from the very first meeting about the teaching of language and specifically grammar. It's pretty common knowledge in the English Language Arts world that it's not good to teach grammar in isolation. However, we had a strand of language standards that were isolated from the rest of the standards. And so we were brainstorming about how we could create a set of standards that would be more reflective of the kind of teaching and the philosophy that, that is, you know, so well-accepted in the English Language Arts community. So there was a creation of this progressions document. So basically, I'll explain it really simply. It took nouns, what are kids in kindergarten going to be doing with nouns? What are kids in first grade going to be doing with nouns? It was actually grade-banded, so it was like K2, 3, 5, and it followed each part of speech and all of that through the grades. The reviewers hated it. They didn't like it at all. They thought it was confusing. They just, they missed it because it was sort of, it was at the end of the standards. So they would get through all of the stuff that looked sort of similar and then they would say, where's grammar? I don't see any grammar. So pulled that out. And instead, those language standards were embedded in the other strands. So now, instead of having a separate strand for language and grammar, we have a category within the reading standards that's called language in reading. And then we have language in writing. And they're embedded under there so that teachers have a more clear idea of how they can teach those language standards within a context. So I'm going to show you what the document looks like here. On the left side, you'll see what went out for public review. This is an example of what we're calling the grade level home screen. This exists for every grade level K-12. So this is the, an example of the, all of the strands. So writing, speaking and listening. K through 5 have these extra reading standards called foundational because that's, you know, kids are learning to read. So, and each of those isn't covered because as kids get those skills, gain those skills, we're not going back and, and, you know, revisiting things necessarily that they had in kindergarten. So, but those are, those remain intact. Literature and then informational text. So from this screen, teachers can navigate to any standard or any strand that they want. As you can see, we pulled out those practices, but it remains pretty much the same. We used to have, in the, in the draft that went out for public review, we had a Word version that had these hover, this hover feature where if you hovered over the standard, it would have a pop-out of what the standard was. The teachers didn't find it to be useful. It took up a lot of space and that functionality was lost in the PDF version, so just pulled it all out. So that feature no longer exists and the standards are better viewed in PDF format. At the bottom of every page of the standards, there's this navigation bar that takes teachers back to the grade level home screen. So they can go to the bottom, click on one, and they'll be taken to the first grade, grade level home screen. That remains in the current draft. The teachers really liked that, or all of the reviewers. This is an example of the grade level home screen. So this can be seen by clicking on one of the strand titles. So in this case, if you click on the writing strand, it'll take you to all of the standards for a single grade level for a single strand. So these are all of the sixth grade writing standards. So we, this is really the reason why the, the teachers were spending a lot of time working on this expanded view of the standards. So this is what it looked like for the public draft on the left side. The practices are at the top and then you're able to see, I know you can't see that, it's kind of small, but a series of boxes. So I'll show you a larger view of it. I think the, the most important bullets are these last two, that condensing of the anchor and intent of anchor standard statements to the statement about Kansas High School graduates can statements. And then, of course, careful review and editing of the students could statements. I think those have a lot of potential for keeping the document, sort of a living document throughout the life of the standards that teachers can, you know, really think about, how can I best meet this standard and, you know, submitting that. But that's for future conversation as we get it, as we progress in this, the life of these standards, I suppose. So this is what the updated expanded view looks like. At the very top, you'll see the grade level standard. So in this example, it's sixth grade speaking and listening standard 1. The entire standard is in that top box. Right below that, you'll have the students could statement. And there's three of them in this case. And this, the stem that introduces the students could statements says to a says, "To address the standard, students could." So these are not really part of the standard. They're not required in professional learning and in our talking with teachers and administrators and whoever. We are going to be very clear about that because they're, they're just, like I said, the teachers were thinking about this as though, if I were to walk into the best 3rd grade classroom, the best 6th grade classroom, what might I see happening in that classroom? So that's how the teachers were thinking about these. And then right below that is that Kansas high school graduates can statement. And those remain the same. So we're looking at writing, or at speaking and listening standard 1 for 6th grade. That Kansas high school graduates can statement would be the same for all of the speaking and listening standard 1 throughout all the grades. And then at the very bottom is that progression. So we can see what standard 1 for speaking and listening looks like in 5th grade. The 6th grade one is in the middle, and then we can see what it looks like in 7th grade. All right, so I think we'll open up for questions.
Steve.
Thank you. So what mechanisms are recommended when teachers don't measure up? When teachers just flat don't get it done? What's, what's the follow-up?
Well, I'm not sure that that's the, within the scope of this presentation.
The standards are written kind of as a springboard of like, when you walk into a 3rd grade classroom, what are they going to be teaching? What are, what are the expectations of the Kansas standards on teachers, on students, on administrators, on parents? What are we expecting literacy to look like in Kansas schools? Whether or not that is happening, is it administrated? Like, that's a billing principal or a superintendent?
I agree that this presentation wasn't designed to address that question. But I'm asking it anyway because I'm serving on the State Board of Education. What do you think should happen?
I think it also has a great opportunity for instructional coaches to be an active part in helping teachers that are trying to do better. And with that, they can find instructional strategies to better their environment within their classroom. And these standards hopefully are going to open up more opportunities for teachers to become innovative and become less tied to like the Shakespeare aspect, less tied to teaching the semicolon in 4th grade. They are still, those standards are still rigorous and still with an academic focus, but it allows students, allows teachers flexibility to see the big picture instead of nitpicking all of those little things.
Okay, I'll tell you what I just heard. What I heard is even when a teacher doesn't measure up, we're going to keep the teacher around. That's what I just heard. I, that's what I heard.
Ann.
Thank you. I don't really have any problem with the standards. I think you guys did an amazing job. Thank you. And I really like the embedded tools that teachers can get to. I hope that's in the science standards, too. My question was about process. At what point in the process are the public hearings that hardly anybody showed up for?
I'm trying to think about the times that we went out, summer.
Before they, before the team gets together, or does the team go?
Well, yes, I mean, there's, for about a year, we had our standards online before any of the committees even met. And that was data that we took to the initial meetings, the initial writing meeting. And, you know, they had that information from the public there with them. And then these meetings, I'm sorry, I'm going back in my head to my calendar about when I was out there. I'm thinking it was April, March and April and May. So spring, late spring. And then they were out online as well. So, yeah, I mean, they had a good couple of months, two, three months to respond.
I wonder why we missed the most populated counties in the state? I mean, we easily missed 80% of the population with the locations of them. And that's water under the bridge, but I hope whoever handles future revisions takes a look at where the public hearings are because if you want somebody to show up, you need to have it somewhere other than Bird City. Does that make sense? I mean, they were all rural, like west of 81, pretty much. So something to consider.
Thank you.
Janet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think they're great. Congratulations. But I have a question. I get asked this question a lot, and I haven't seen anything about it, and I haven't heard anyone from the department really give me a good explanation. So here's my question. What about cursive? Because I get asked this question a lot by the public.
We have standards for handwriting that are separate from this, yes. They were adopted right about the time I joined the agency, so 2013. They were just being adopted, and there was a separate committee for those. So that's what about handwriting? So we have.
I was just curious because I know a lot of districts don't even teach it anymore. So I'm just curious if, if this is a, if this is going by way of the dinosaur? Or, you know, I mean, has it died? Or are we still, you know, because I get asked this a lot, so.
Well, we do have standards for that, and I can, I can connect you with where they are, so.
I would appreciate that.
They're model standards. They're not assessed, obviously, but we do have Kansas standards for handwriting.
Thank you. When will we see these for action?
Say again, I'm sorry, I missed.
When will we see these for approval?
Next month, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ken.
Presentation. I'm just, when I think about teaching, reading, and writing, I'm not an educator, but it seems like these, I always feel like standards just maybe kind of get in the way or kind of restrict the flow, ebb and flow of a teaching exercise. Do you think these standards free teachers up? Or do they, you know, I heard a lot of talk about being able to go back to the previous year and the next year to make sure we're in the right spot. Is that what the standards are designed to do? Or are they designed to teach kids to read right?
As a teacher, I am empowered by these standards. It's very, and as a parent, I think I am empowered by these standards because I can go into, my son is in 1st grade, and I can see when he brings home homework or an assessment or something, I can see, okay, he is performing above or below on this particular standard because it's a progressive standard, K-12. And so I can say, my son is on fact, determining whether a statement is a fact or an opinion. My son is trying to weed through the words "I believe" or something like that in a 1st grade's mindset. And so it empowers me as a, as a parent. But then as a teacher, it empowers me because when we get students, we, I don't, I teach 6th grade. I don't, all of my students don't come to me reading at a 6th grade level. And so it helps with like an individual plan of study because the kids that are coming to me are reading at a 10th grade level. I can see, it's not my job to teach them to read at a 6th grade level. It's my job to teach them to push on higher than a 10th grade level. And so I want to see what that next progression is. And years ago, it used to be that the teachers would print out the standards of their grade level, and they used to have little deltas, little triangles that said what were tested. And that's all the teachers would focus on was all these delta standards. So we're going to do prefix, roots, and suffix, and we're going to only teach the prefix "un" or something because that's what's going to be on the test. And this allows, there's no deltas, there's no, this is going to be on, this is what you have to pass the test to get a good grade on. It gives practical steps for students to see why they are, why are the, why the instruction is catered to them. And so it is empowering to me as a teacher and a parent.
Okay, well, that's good, I suppose. I raised a bunch of kids, and even got several grandkids in school, and I don't ever remember pulling up standards at home to read to see if my kid was in the right spot. I can see standards being helpful to teachers, but my concern is, are the standards actually helping? Are they actually freeing teachers up? And the one thing that I, that I haven't seen mentioned, and I admit to not having read them fully, what kind of emphasis is there on just reading? I mean, are there, are there suggestions or requirements for the kinds of material to read? Or should students be allowed to read within the context of something they're interested in? The most important thing to do is to read. And I find most kids don't read at all. I mean, there are very few who do. I was a reader, but, you know, I don't find kids who read anything. They're not, I mean, they may maybe read what they're required to read at school, whether it interests them or not. But just reading to learn to love reading, I think, is one of the most important things we teach.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. And I think we've been doing a lot of professional learning to that end. And there's definitely nothing in these standards that would keep a teacher from creating a classroom where it's more about building readers than, than teaching reading.
Well, is there any encouragement in the standards for teachers to actually do that? Rather than just giving them the freedom to do it? I mean, is that, that's not, not normal. So I think we need to lean toward kind of pushing the teaching of reading in that, in that direction, do you agree?
Yes, and I think if you look at the whole of the students could statements, they're leaning that direction. Many of them say things like, student selects a text of interest to him or her, or student reads an engaging, after reading an engaging text about a, about wind energy, or, you know, whatever, whatever it is. The social studies and the science standards were looked at in the creation of those to make sure that the topics that were included as examples of, you know, what students could be doing in a classroom were grade-level things that students might actually be studying or might actually be interested in studying at that grade level. So I think that that's definitely something, your sentiment is definitely something that was driving the creation of the standards and then also the accompanying documents that are, that support them, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
And Ken, I just looked at my phone and noticed that you wanted to ask questions 45 minutes ago. And since I just saw that, I need to apologize to you. We have to be ready to meet with, thank you very much. We have to be ready to meet with Representative Yoder at 4 o'clock. So what, we're, this is going to be the plan for the rest of the day. We're going to take about a 10-minute break now. We're going to come back and do the report on civic engagement and then the bullying prevention, which probably will take us till 4 o'clock. And after we meet with Representative Yoder, we are going to come back and finish today's agenda. Let's come back to order, and at this point, we're going to have a report on civic engagement initiatives. Jessica.
Hello there. Thanks for having me, Chairman Porter and members of the board. So you have heard from me before, and you might be thinking, what does she know about civic engagement? I thought she was graduation and virtual consultant charter schools. But about a year ago, I moved into an assistant director position here at KSDE. And so now I am doing activities around civic engagement, also working with the Kansas Volunteer Commission with our mentoring partnership and AmeriCorps program. So very excited to be here. I'm the lead on civic engagement, but I would be nowhere without Don Gifford, who is the coordinator. And so he's not here today. He presented to you all in May, and so today it was my turn. So very briefly, I'm going to get you back on track with your schedule here because we are doing a lot of things with regard to our civic engagement initiative, but a lot of behind-the-scenes things. So getting the application ready, getting all of the resources uploaded to the website, getting our materials ready. So not a lot of things that would have front presence. The one thing that we are doing right now, right in the middle of, is our Civic Engagement Roadshow. So we have been out and about to seven communities all across the state, and we have completed four so far. There are three more to go later this week and next week. We've had 90 districts participate so far. And those civic engagement roadshows really have twofold purpose. So the first is they're introducing districts and schools to the Civic Advocacy Network, which, as you know, is our award program for civic engagement, which will roll out in the spring, and we'll have our first group sort of inducted in the fall. But the second was to give them an opportunity to have a collaborative discussion about how to, how to create a culture that embraces civic engagement. Because that'll be the biggest struggle as we move into civic engagement is not, how do we add this onto what we're already doing? Where do we put this in the day? Oh, should I carve out 10 minutes for civic engagement at the end of the day? We'll, we'll do some cleanup. No, we need to radically have, have a mind shift change that everything we're doing is sort of with this civic engagement mind shift. And that will take a lot of work from our perspective to be able to share that information with the schools and to also be able to provide training and technical assistance to them, but then also for them to be able to embrace that change as they move forward. So that's what we're doing right now with civic engagement. As we move into the spring, we'll be hosting a conference on civic engagement. We'll have the application rollout. We'll score those over the summer, and we'll have our first group inducted into the Kansas Civic Advocacy Network in the fall, specifically on September 17th. Does anyone know why it's September 17th? It is Constitution Day, yes. Don Gifford would be very happy that you know that. Yes, I thought it was celebratory in anticipation of my birthday the next day, but he informed me it's Constitution Day, so. I also wanted to address, I know that at the last boarding meeting, there was a question regarding our schools and the history government standards and voter registration. So I wanted to go ahead and address that now and say that the standards do promote, especially in the history government courses at the, at the high school level, voter participation and registration. And many of our schools do provide their students with the voter registration form. The trouble is that then the student has to take that form with their proof of citizenship and either mail it in or they have to take it down to their post office or wherever it is that they can register to vote. And it's that second step that we sometimes lose our students because that's not really something that the school can be involved in with collecting that citizenship information to mail those in. I would also go beyond that and say that even if we had that done for all of our students, there's still something about the disposition or the desire or the initiative to vote that has to be fostered and built into students all throughout their time in our, in our education system. And that's what the Civic Engagement Initiative is hoping to do. So I know that there was a question about that specific voter registration form, but the Civic Engagement Initiative is really hoping to go beyond that and to foster a group of young people who want to vote and who desire to vote. So I hope that answered questions, but I'll stand for any others you have.
Thank you. If they use the federal form, they need no birth certificate. Tell the schools to use the federal registration form and send it in.
Okay, I'll make a note about that.
Janet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Ann. I'm aware of that also, but I thought, someone told me that most, that the schools have a copy of their birth certificate. A lot of the, I mean, when they enroll them, sometimes a lot of them show baptism certificate or something that's not really a birth certificate, but a lot of the kids, the majority of kids, I would say.
I don't know the answer to that question.
I thought that was.
I checked with.
It used to be, I know, I don't know whether it still is because, I mean, I don't like, even my, of course, my grandchildren are in high school, but I thought they had to have it, you know, when they enrolled.
You have to bring one, but not all the schools hang on to them because I've called a few high schools to say, don't you have the birth certificates right there? And they say, no, we don't keep them for 16 years, so, whatever that would be.
I wonder if they copy them or something? Wouldn't they copy, or do they have to have a certified copy?
Well, they should have them in. In 2012, if you got your driver's license after 2012, you had to bring your birth certificate in as a new driver, and they're supposed to be copying it, but they're not tracking it.
Well, I just simply want to see, I recognize that we're doing this, but I guess maybe we need to emphasize it a little more, let's say, because I was disappointed with that data I received to find out that Kansas was very low in the nation in 18- to 25-year-olds voting. And I think that's a sad comment on our state, you know? And so to me, that kind of reflects on us, that maybe we aren't emphasizing, putting enough emphasis on the importance of voting. And so my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have an observation, and it's for my fellow board members as much as it is for you, Jessica. Prior to a trip that my wife and I just took to Europe, I had two weeks at Lawrence Free State to teach consumer math for seniors and pre-calculus. And since I had a fortnight there, minus two days for meeting with these good folks, I took the last day that I was there with them, and we talked about issues. One of the things I learned that students are being indoctrinated with at this particular school is you don't want to try to engage someone in what's termed a courageous conversation, because you don't want to ruffle any feathers, and you don't want to make anybody uncomfortable. Now, that's one of the dynamics we have in this society. I think the pendulum has swung too far. I think we need to talk about issues. And when we tell students it's a bad idea to talk about issues, that flies in the face, I think, of what we're trying to do right here in civic engagement. It's just an observation.
Thank you.
And we thank you. I don't see any further questions.
Thank you all very much.
Tell Don we missed him.
I will.
So are you going to teach us how to bully?
Can I defer that?
I was wondering if we were far against it.
I think we're against it, as a matter of fact, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Board. It's time for our annual visit on Anti-Bullying Awareness Week. And we also share some data with you at this time. Just as a reminder, in 2011, the Kansas Senate and the State Board joined together to write a joint resolution that created the first week in October as Anti-Bullying Awareness Week. And before we get into some of the submissions, some of the things that schools are doing, we usually like to take a quick look or a snapshot at some of the data that we have collected through CANDIS. This first figure is a trend on bullying, and that's the incident count. This past year, we had a little over 1,750 incidents reported. The highlighted area, I wanted to make sure you understood, beginning in 2015, the collection changed from an aggregate, which is usually end-of-the-year submission, to individual incident reporting. So as it occurs during the school year now, it's reported to CANDIS. And we think that's going to create a more reliable count, okay? So that's what that little highlight is for. Trends on types of bullying. I'm often asked, okay, what's the typical bullying situation? And you can see that verbal bullying is reported more often than the others. You have physical bullying, the gray area. And I did give you two different handouts. One is a better look at the screenshot, so you can see it. And then I also gave you a copy of the note pages, okay? I believe Brad mentioned that there were questions about cyberbullying. Perhaps Ms. Bush raised that. And you can see that there aren't as many reported incidents relative to cyberbullying as there would be for verbal or physical. And then relational bullying, and we've talked about this before, the movie Mean Girls, being excluded from overnight parties, that kind of stuff. That is down as well, okay? Trend on disciplinary actions for bullying. ISS is in-school suspension. OSS is out-of-school. E is expulsion. And other can be anything ranging from death to incarceration to dropping out, withdrawing. And you can see that other kind of flatlined over the last couple of years. I think something to make note of is out-of-school suspensions have decreased, and in-school suspensions have increased. And I think that means that schools are working with these situations a lot better. And they know that releasing a kid out into the community for three days may not be the wisest choice. And they have programs now for in-school that will help them develop pro-social behaviors. All right? Any questions about the data?
I'm sorry, Kent, I didn't get where you said, where they reported it to. Who was the bullying reported to?
This is part of the CANDIS application.
CAN, CANDIS?
CANDIS. And it's a collection that we've had now for many years. And IT kind of takes care of that. Laura Jurgensen also has been very responsible for making sure that that runs effectively and efficiently. And, yeah, and we do think that the reliability is going to increase with the individual reporting.
Ann has a question, Kent.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We had corresponded about the restorative justice circles. And I know the KSDE was involved in providing some training to schools. Is this something you think we should push harder? Or we just kind of kicked it off, and now they can use it if they want? Because.
Yeah, restorative practices. Remember when we presented on Tomma Informed? And one of the recommendations was utilizing restorative practices. I have a background in juvenile justice, and we use restorative practices, and our recidivism rate was less than 1%. So we know that that particular strategy works in several different venues. You've had a presentation, I can't remember how long ago it was, maybe five or six months ago, where Kansas Children's Service League came in, and Donna Boo presented on the program that they have here in Topeka. A lot of the schools around the state that are utilizing restorative justices, they have trained through KIP Core, which is out of Newton, and the Kansas Institute for Peace and Reconciliation. And it's proven to be successful. Wichita uses restorative practices. And in fact, their DA used to use a, I can't remember exactly what they called it, but essentially it was restorative circles with their juvenile offenders. And we used to do that here in Topeka. So I think it's well worth looking into and supporting. Okay, the theme this year was take a stand and lend a hand. And twofold meaning to that. First of all, the bystander syndrome. If you see it, do something about it, okay? But also, in line with our other initiatives, and Jessica was just here talking about civic engagement, we know that if you substitute pro-social behaviors, they don't have time to do the antisocial behaviors. So service learning, civic engagement, entering. And I'll show you a picture of what they're doing in Dodge City here in a moment. Those kind of behaviors will decrease bullying. So we encourage the field to take a look at those options. And I want to thank a couple of people. First of all, Byron Melton is here, and he helped with this campaign. And then Amanda Manville in Communications, and of course, the entire Communications team always helps during this week. And Amanda helped us with our Twitter campaign. Okay, submitted anti-bullying activities, pretty much the same thing that we've had over the last few years. Everything from student privacy is an issue, so release forms need to be dealt with. School webpages, newsletters, lesson plans. I mentioned the Twitter campaign that we have, YouTube videos. If you go on YouTube and just, you know, search Kansas plus bullying, you'll see a bunch of them. Art projects, all kinds of different things. Christian Alicia is Ms. Can, and her message, her platform this year has to do with kids with disabilities and bullying. And so Valley Center asked her, many schools have asked her to come in and give a presentation, and she does a very good job at that. Red Ribbon and Bullying Awareness Week. The first week in October sometimes coincides with Red Ribbon Week, which is anti-drug, anti-alcohol awareness, as well as homecoming for a lot of high schools. And what Blue Stym Elementary did is they combined Red Ribbon with anti-bullying activities. To answer Kathy's question about cyberbullying, a lot of schools utilize one of these options or more of these options. One is the Attorney General's Office has a great site on internet safety and cyberbullying curriculum. A lot of schools utilize that. In USD 460, they had Social Media Day, which they provided tips to kids on social media, awareness, etiquette, support, and resources. USD 428 had a Parents Night with Police Officers, Community Engagement. They've included cyberbullying, anti-cyberbullying in their classroom instruction, and the technology is always looking for a curriculum that will enhance that. A lot of schools rely on our friends at the Education Service Centers for curriculum, learning modules, and videos. And then I listed a couple of commercial products that a lot of schools utilize. Okay? Wichita Heights theme. And here's a picture of what they utilized. I put this in because I think you need to know that not only is it at the building level and at the student level, but districts buy into this. And this is a picture, a snapshot off of Mulvane's district page. And you can see the item on their district page. So at the district level, it's taken seriously. And at the building level, it's taken seriously as well. We have a couple of different agencies that support our efforts. First, Kansas Department of Health and Environment created a webpage, and does a lot of work in terms of that. And also, I mentioned previously, Kansas Children's Service League, especially in the Wichita area, has been very supportive of anti-bullying efforts. Madison High, a lot of schools use theme weeks. And I had to laugh when I saw this, because I think Kansas educators are very creative. And Madison High, which by the way, that week was homecoming week, they had Vacation Day, which they said, any destination is better together, be an includer. Twin Day, we are more alike than we are different. Class Colors Day, stick together, be classy, be kind. My favorite piece out, nah, it's totally in. And then, of course, Friday was homecoming, and they did Black and Gold Day. So they're very creative, and they're very committed to what we're trying to do. A lot of activities are student-directed. And this is a piece of art that was done in Dodge City in relationship to their theme week. And then one of the really neat things that they did is they took, in Dodge City, Dodge City High, they took their activities, their sports, their extracurriculars, their clubs, they all took pictures, and then they put it in this format with an anti-bullying statement. Made them, blew them up in posters, put them out all over the school. Then they put them all over the building, in schools, all over the community. So the word was getting out, not only from the high school, but all the way down to the elementary schools. Anti-bullying is often integrated into, and in this case, it's an art project at Northern Lining County, Allen Elementary. This is still my favorite. It comes from Seaman, and it says, tweet others as you would want to be tweeted. And that's a classic example of anti-cyberbullying efforts. Now, I have a lot of videos that are submitted to me. And remember that most of those videos are probably more important to them in the building than they would be to an outside audience. But this particular video gives you an example of how schools can, in an activity, teach interpersonal skills, character development. It engages the entire school. And as I mentioned before, it's often integrated into the classroom. And this particular effort came in under budget, and it's from Turner Elementary. And by the time this point in the afternoon, I love the music. Yeah. Let me try this. I've actually, I. Have you? Oh, this one. Up, here we go. I'll stand for questions. I thought you would like that. Pardon me?
How much did Janet pay you? Thank you, Kent.
Thank you.
Bless her. Let's have a quick question and go ahead and approve the consent agenda. Sally and Janet? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Eight, one. Mr. Dennis? We may have to stop you in the middle of a sentence, but.
We're dishonored to be here, Mr. Chairman. Craig, we're going to give you a kind of a one-page summary of some things we thought will help you a little bit. And not as scientific, probably, and as sophisticated as Mark would do, but it's easily understood. By the way, Commissioner, that was one of your finest reports earlier today. Well done. I didn't say that, but it was good. It was good, and I've heard several, but that one's good. I want to try to walk through with you a very brief summary of the court case. We're going to put 88 pages and one and a half or whatever. Several things on equity that the court thought we had a problem. One is, the biggest of all was the. One is, the biggest of all was the LOB in the law. It provided that we would compute the LOB state aid on the prior year's budget. Appropriated on the current year's budget. And so, it should have been current year, but it wasn't, and so, that will be, that'll have to be corrected. But it's clear the legislative intent, I believe, because they appropriated the money to do it. Number two is, they didn't like the way that the protest petition of thirty-three percent. They thought there was some dis-equalization involved. Some people already had the thirty-three, some had elections, some didn't have elections. They didn't like the equity piece. The formula, but the process of going about and getting the thirty-three percent. And that's something that's easily solvable. The law's always provided that you can go to the state average, which is thirty percent, but if you want to go above that, there's things you had to do. And times in the process, the last couple of years, it was much easier for some than it was for others. Some may take election, one other time, another point, there was a short period of time you didn't. So equalize that to make it simple and easy, not necessarily simple, but equal for everybody in The court did not like, and didn't think it was equitable, to put a floor of ten percent on at-risk. So if you don't have at-risk up to ten percent, we'll give you ten percent. They didn't like that and said that was dis-equalizing in that one or two districts. The next is at-risk. The at-risk, we raised from four, point four-five-six to point four-eight-four. Now, that four-eight-four, I believe, was put in good reason, and it came from one of the legislative studies. But I believe one of the problems was, we didn't explain where it come from. The court did not understand where it come from. And that, and so, the state did not explain that very well, where the point four-eight-four come from and how it was arrived. And that's, and I don't think that's near as big an issue if we go back and explain where it come from. The next bullet, the court did not like, would not buy paying utilities and property and casualty insurance out of the capital outlay fund. They thought that was inappropriate. They even went, cited two school districts of similar size, where one of them could pay their utilities and casualty insurance and still have more left than the other district. And that was not equalized. So the bottom line is, all they would need to do there is take utilities and property and casualty insurance outlay fund, which was new last year. In special ed, it was interesting. They didn't, they just said special ed was an issue, something that ought to be looked at, but it kind of implied that if your base was okay, that special ed wouldn't, might be okay. But they didn't say, they cited you need to be at ninety, ninety-two percent, but it had to go that far. But anyway, that's an issue. In the law now, it goes up twelve million per year. But in all honesty, we will not gain much in percentage of excess costs at twelve million a year, because expenditures will rise faster than that. So that is just, I think that one'd be up to the, up to the, of course, up to the court, but I don't believe you would have to do a whole lot there if we funded the base as we should. On the adequacy piece, it was interesting. Page forty-three, if you want to read it, in the opinion itself we sent out a long time ago, they didn't say the amount of money, but they put in the three ranges that were talked about. One was from the plaintiffs at one point seven billion. Another was the State Board at eight hundred and ninety-three million. And they used that in several places in the opinion, what the board recommended. And then, they also, there was another one adjusted for inflation. The plaintiffs mentioned eight hundred and nineteen million. So will the court buy multiple years? Don't know, but they did last time. Last time was three years. The other thing I think is important, not said directly in this opinion, but whatever you do, you're going to need to be able to prove that you got the money to pay for it. There has to be funding, has to be available within the realm. Now, on that topic, I just want to mention this, that revenue since July one, state general fund revenue, this is pretty significant, I think. We're running about twenty-five million per month on the average above estimates. So we're up about seventy-five million for the first three months, seventy-six to be precise. So is that due to maybe the estimates not very good when they set them up? Or is the revenue up and will continue to stay in that realm? Twenty-five million a month for the whole year, that's a lot of money. That puts you up in John's class. That's about, what, three hundred million? So, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't count that, but I think there will be some significant increases above estimates the way it's looking right now. The other thing that was interesting, I don't recall seeing this very often. Mark, you may want to comment on this. I don't recall seeing very often that the court will set a date when you file your briefs when you don't have a law yet. A little unique. Do they do that very often? I agree, but they, they set a date. They didn't want to do it until the last minute and all that. So they've got to have the briefs filed by April thirtieth. That means that from the legislative point of view, they've got to make their decision by around the fifteenth of April, the latest. Remember, you have to publish it and go through the register and all that. So April thirtieth, and each side will have to respond to that brief. And April, or May the twenty-second, where we'll have oral arguments at nine o'clock. And they'll make a decision by June thirtieth. So the legislature really needs to start moving on this. The Legislative Budget Committee has indicated they'll discuss. They didn't say whether they're going to or not, but they're going to discuss where they want to appoint a committee to prepare for this. And some thinks it's a good idea, some don't, and I don't know what they might do, but going in cold turkey will be difficult. I don't care who you are, what you are, if you go in cold turkey without preparation, why, it'll be a challenge. So, but they're going to discuss that on April the thirtieth. The other thing I wanted to mention before the VIP arrives and speaks is that last year, at the last minute, the last twenty-four hours, a limitation on bonds. And we're, we hold hearings we recommend to you, but we have to live within a limitation. And that limitation, we cannot exceed, with a few exceptions, the amount of money paid off the preceding year. Okay? We paid off three hundred and twenty-one million, give or take a little bit. Okay? We have an application in now from Derby, hundred and twenty-five million. We only have a hundred and twelve million dollars left. So we will not be recommending that to you until, if the November elections, if enough districts fail their bond elections, then we can proceed. So we'll have to wait until after the election's over, and we'll get it out, they want it as soon as possible, so they do their homework. So about the eighth of November, we'll know who passed, who didn't. And then, we can make a decision whether we can submit it to the board. There's other districts that's looking at bond issues, or some over in Johnson County, there's several that's looking at it. And so, she's going to have to be addressed. It's going to be a creative problem. Mr. Chairman, I've told you all I know. But anyway, I just, this is a legislative matter, and I think that, I have great faith that they'll respond appropriately. Thank you, sir.
I want to continue this discussion for just a few minutes, but right now, we've made a commitment to Representative Yoder, and I think we need to keep that timeframe. If you'll join us at the table, sir? Okay, again, let me remind you of the order. We're going to, first of all, start with the Commissioner going over the Kansas Vision, our education in Kansas, after which time, we are going to ask you to make whatever comments you wish, and then we will open for the board to ask questions, all educational-related. And Yeah, and, and then, we've made a commitment to be through by five o'clock, and we'll try to work within that commitment unless you just have a, have a strong desire to stay till seven or eight. Certainly, thank you for being here. Mr. Commissioner?
Thank you.
The number one thing that will make us thrive in Kansas is to provide world-class education to each and every child.
Whatever it is, we want them to problem-solve it and attack the situation, have the confidence and feel prepared to do it.
Every child is looked at as an individual, and every child is given the right and the opportunity to succeed.
Really, what it means to make sure that every kid is prepared is that they have the opportunity to dream and that they have the skills to realize those dreams.
When I grow up, I hope to be a singer or an actress.
We have to maintain our commitment to programming like the arts, choirs, bands, all the other things that we don't necessarily think of as core areas.
We have an opportunity before us that the State Board is setting forth that says test scores are important, but they shouldn't be what drives our work. What should drive our work is what our kids need, who they are and who they can become.
Not only do we have a strong literacy, communication, math skill foundation, but education and educators instill a hope. They're bigger.
We're not just applying a standard to all kids, but we're looking at where they are in, as individuals, and we're helping them grow, and we're helping them achieve.
I know a lot more Spanish. I didn't know how to read, write, and now I do.
We have quality educators, school board members, State Board of Education members that are wholly dedicated to the cause of public education.
What I like about my teachers is that they're very kind and they're very helpful.
Kansans can lead the world in student success. As we focus on the needs of our kids, we think forward, and we're innovative, and we allow ourselves to dream with our kids and to make sure that their supports are in place.
Kansans can do anything we put our minds to.
Kansans can make all things possible.
Kansans can achieve anything they set their mind to.
And do anything.
Obviously, that last shot was, as I drove to DeSoto early in the morning yesterday, and the sun was rising, beautiful oranges and purples and blues, I thought, well, and a couple of stars on the horizon. It's a good thing, it's good not to live in New York sometime, just to be able to appreciate that. And so, what I'm about with you, Representative Yoder, is what is uniquely Kansas. I think that's always been what we're about, and what Kansans, so does they want in their schools, what the State Board has done to craft that, how we continue in that feedback loop and trying to design it, and then how we appreciate your support of allowing us to have that flexibility to do what we need to do and, and to continue the funding on the programs that make a difference. We have likened this as when Kennedy issued a challenge to land a man on the moon. So we have a ten-year journey. We talked about that this morning. And it's a serious journey, which we're trying in the next, by two thousand twenty-six, to totally redesign K-12 education for all two hundred and eighty-six school districts. And here's what Kansans said they wanted. So we went out and simply asked three questions of Kansans. Brad Noenswander and I, and many of the State Boarder joined us. We asked, what, if you think of a successful twenty-four-year-old living in our state, a young person living in our state, please describe that person in vivid detail, skills and the characteristics and the, and what that person looks like, is able to do. Second question we asked is, what's K-12's role, if any, in developing that person you just described? And third is, what's higher ed? And we asked that question in twenty different locations across Kansas, and we had an online presence too, that you could go online. Over two thousand Kansans said, what make up success? Seventy percent of the responses are not measured on a test. It's persistence and goal-setting and character and show up to work on time and all these other skill sets. Yes, algebra was important, and using a tape measure was important, but there's a whole lot of other reasons for that. You can see that successful people are healthy physically and mentally, they're employed, and they have some credential, but the bulk of that were the, what we call these employability or non-academic skills. What was interesting about that is, can't, we gave that data to Kansas State, and literally, it would not run. There were so many data sets of open-ended data. They said our software won't run it. We had to go get more additional license. And Kansas State said, "This is the largest qualitative study ever done in the history of our state." That's instructive, because as this State Board has gone about putting together what Kansans wanted in their schools, we are committed to doing what Kansans said that they want to do. And that's why we really like ESSA, because it gives us this flexibility to do that. But we didn't have as much business participation as we would have liked. So I made a phone call to then the chamber executive, Mike O'Neill, and said, "Can you help us?" And he came over, and we structured an opportunity to go to seven different Kansas locations than the original twenty, and engage local chambers of commerce and talk directly to business leaders. So from Goodyear and Black and Beach and Spirit and Cerner to Mom and Pop Shops. And we asked the same three, three questions. What, when you think of a successful young person, describe it. And when you, what's K-12's role, and what's, what's higher ed's role? And this is what business told us. Eighty-one percent of the responses said, "What make up success in our world is a measure not a standardized test." And here we got a little bit different, like, can you show up to work on time and pass a drug test? Those were some of the things. But I want to tell a story that I've told many times, Representative Yoder. I was in Lawrence, and a CEO of a medium-sized construction company said, "Randy, I want to tell you a story about what happened last week. I hired two young people to start on my construction crew at twenty dollars an hour." And said, "Young men, we'll start on Monday morning at eight o'clock. And at eight fifteen on Monday morning, one of them walked through the door, and at eight thirty-four, the other one walked through the door." He said, "That was a little miffed, more than a little miffed, but I said to the young men, 'Get your tools, get on the truck, we'll, I'll deal with you when we get on the work site.'" And he said, "By nine thirty, one of them was on their cell." And he said, "Then at the end of the shift, one of the two young men came up to me," and I'm going to start, I'm going to quote what he said to me. He said, and one of the young men said, "Dude, how did I get promoted in your company?" And the CEO, who was about from me to you, Representative Yoder, says, "I looked at him and I said, 'Dude, you're not going to get promoted, I'm about to fire your ass.'" And I'll never forget, because he had steely gray-blue eyes, and he looked at me and he said, "That's the kid that you're sending me." And like all of us in any of the work that we do, you know, yourself included, when you work hard on something and you've committed your life to it, those kind of comments make you defensive at first. And I, I didn't react, because he was sharing with me his experience. I'm paying someone what I believe is a good wage, and on day one, they're not even committed to trying to give a good day's work. And I think that's illustrative of what business was telling us in those non-instructional skills. And what Kansans said throughout this is, "Just put this back in balance. Don't make it all about test prep on kids. Put it back in balance and work with families and the business community to make this happen." So the State Board said, "We need to rebalance the great work Kansas schools are doing. We need to put the right emphasis on testing and then help kids develop their passions." State Board took all of this data and spent several months State Board took all of this data and spent several months and finally came up with what we still call a new vision. I heard several people today still refer it to as a new vision. Kansas leads the world in success, and I think you'll appreciate this. So I like to say, well, if you're gonna have a vision statement, it should be bold, lead the world, sounds a lot better than beat Oklahoma, you know, if you grew up in southeast Kansas like I did. And now that the border war, I understand is gonna be on for at least one game or three. But the key to this is the success of each student. How do we make sure each and every child in our school has the opportunities to be successful in whatever they choose to do? So this means a lot to us, and the pins that we wear illustrate that and, and lead us to that path. Said, to be successful when you graduate high school, you need five skill sets, all equally important in a balanced way. Academic, sure, we talked a lot about that this morning. You need to have cognitive preparation, which are what everyone does as adults, are putting these skill sets together. Just recently talking to a gentleman I know, well, that's an architect, and he was retiring from the architectural firm, and I said, I was just, I said to him, what's changed over the years? And he said, well, I can tell you that I loved design from an early child, and I went to Kansas during architecture, and they did a wonderful job teaching me about design and how to craft buildings and, you know, how to build these things really well. He said, but I needed skills on how to sell, because I never was gonna be hired unless I sold the project before I ever got a chance to design it. I wasn't taught that skill at all. And yet, those cognitive of putting them together, or technical, how do I build things? How do I, how do I code? How do I put that together? Certainly employability, we just talked about, and civic engagement. Kansans said, successful people give back to others, they give back to their community and they are involved in their community. And then the State Board said, we have to be able to measure that. So they focused on five areas, and we continue to do that. Social, emotional growth of kids, that's that soft skill side, making sure every student's prepared for kindergarten emotionally and socially, having an individual plan of instruction for every single child, eyeing consultation with their family and redesigned every six months or so, and then a heavy focus on, on high school graduation and post-secondary completion. We have asked Representative Yoder, we're now starting year three of this journey, we have asked you, school districts, would you be willing to join us in a complete redesign of the structure of K-12 education to make sure every kid can be successful? And we launched it on May 24th with a webinar and said, you have to have your application in by August 1. Oh, by the way, you have to have 80% vote of your faculty, you have to have a letter of support by your local teacher union, and you have to have a public vote of your school board. Oh, and did we tell you, we understand school is out and your teachers are scattered? We were hoping that we would get seven, because we were gonna choose seven school districts, named the Mercury Seven Astronauts, and we received 29. Over 10% of the school districts said, yep, we're in. So we didn't know what to do, quite honestly, because we only had the resources to deal with seven. And those resources, by the way, of the two people that we have, and today, they are They were, I think, in Twin Valley, I don't know where they're at today, but they're somewhere in one of those seven. But the resources that came were Title II funds given to us by the federal government on school improvement. At one point in the, in the President's budget, that was to be eliminated, and that put us on hold till May 24th. This is the tie-in to the federal. We didn't ask for more money, it was the money that was already allocated. And these 29 have, those seven have agreed to totally redesign one elementary and one secondary school and launch in the fall of 18. And the other 21 have said, we will agree to do that either in the 18 or the fall of 19. We're gonna call them Gemini. They're gonna be redesigned around four basic principles, what Kansans said. We want the journey to be personalized by every kid. If you're above grade level, you ought to be able to go as far as you can go. If you need help, give help. You don't need a label, we ought to deliver what you need and what your family need. Real-world projects, so if, if, that we can engage the business community in and we engage parents in, a longer time with teachers. What's that mean? Multiple years, multiple hours, so that families can get to know their, their teacher, much like the one-room schoolhouse. And as I mentioned, an immersion with parents in the community, not just come to parent-teacher conferences and have a cookie, but a true immersion back to the school. And in a nutshell, that's where we're headed. It's an ambitious goal, no other state's trying to do it. We're not trying to scale up a few charters over here, or, you know, a couple of demo, 286 is going to be, because we're, you know, as you know, we're close, I mean, schools are consolidating slowly over time. We appreciate your efforts, we appreciate all that you have done, along with the other representatives in Kansas, and Senator Robertson, Senator Moran, you all have been great advocates. What I know this Board would like to see is simply a stabilization of the title funds, the federal funds that flow. We're not asking for more, but to have a substantial cut would hurt the efforts where we're trying to scale some innovation, and then the state money will take over and go from there. So we'd be happy, I know any of these people would be happy to talk to you hours about this work, because they're extremely passionate about it. And I, I want to say this, as you know, the State Board's an elected board, Democrats, Republicans, partisan election. Today's an example. We didn't, we weren't unanimous on approving the agenda. This is a 10-0 vote. This is not Democrat, Republican, liberal, or conservative. This is Kansas way. They've joined in agreement, this is where we should go, and they're excited about it. So with that, I'll be quiet, Mr. Chairman, and let, and great discussion with the represent.
Thank you. The floor is yours, so why don't you, whatever you're comfortable with. Whatever works. Well, thank you for that wonderful presentation, Commissioner Watson, and it's an honor to be here with the 10 elected members of the State School Board, and to have a chance to talk about the future of our state as it relates to education and our efforts jointly at the federal, state level, and of course, local level, to provide the best education for our kids. And I want to thank one of my constituents, Janet Waugh, for inviting me to come here. You can either thank her or blame her for this hour of your time, but we, she serves on an education advisory committee that I have formed, and we meet from time to time. We're discussing a chance to get together, and she suggested it might be a good idea to come and meet with all of you, and I thought that was a great idea. And so, really, an open agenda, it's really fascinating to learn about the Kansas Can Program, learn more about it. I'm familiar with it, you were moving in that direction, but didn't really know about the background survey research and the work you did to go out of chambers of commerce and talk to employers that we hope employ these young learners and provide them the careers and future that they aspire to have, is what are those employers looking for? What are the skills that are important to them? Those results were very interesting to me, and so I appreciate your vision. You're hearing a lot of the same things that I hear when I'm out. When I first started in this job in 2010, we are really number one goal, and it still is one of our top goals, is to create more jobs. We want jobs for Kansans, we want jobs across the country. But now I also hear from a lot of employers who say, we can't find the workers we need, or we can't find the workers with the right skills. And so finding that skills-based labor, preparing these children, these students for the future, is a combination of your work here, and of course, our friends at the Board of Regents and their work at higher ed. And so my goal is to be a good listener, a good advocate, and try to, you know, unify our efforts from, you know, kindergarten all the way through graduate school, school and, and law school, and however far someone wants to go, to be prepared for the dreams they have and to have the schools they need. I think one of the, the best parts I heard about your presentation was the personalization and the idea that we don't cap excellence, you know, if the student's ready to achieve beyond their grade level, we find ways to make that work for them, or allowing a system that works for everyone, those that fall behind and those that want to speed up. And to me, that really speaks to tailor-making and educational process for everyone. So thanks for, for having me today. I look forward to a good conversation. Let me give you just a few thoughts on what I hear and see and what our work is on the federal level. I think first of all, of course, your goals from this Board of Education and statewide for our children, of course, always has to be, you know, preparing them for the future, and a lot of that is preparing them for a four-year degree, is making sure they're college-ready. That's a critical thing, it's been an important part of what we do here, and we need to continue to work towards that. At the same time, I think we now also know that a four-year university isn't the best choice for every child, or that there are lots of options that lie for those who choose not to go to a four-year school, that we need a diverse set of opportunities after high school. And frankly, I hear just as much from employers in my area that need an engineer or a medical professional as I do, someone needs a skilled labor person, someone who, you know, can make a very great wage, who doesn't have a lot of student loans because they didn't go to a four-year school. And so finding that right plan for each student, I think, is also part of the personalization, and it's really critical for our economic needs. As we talk about, you know, how do we bring, you know, big employers to Kansas City? How do we bring a big Amazon plant, or, you know, these employers that look to, to find somewhere to go? We want them to choose Kansas as their home, but we need to make sure we have the labor and the skills necessary for those jobs. And so I commend you for looking towards that and really just want to reinforce some of the things that I hear. This, next month, we'll be having an annual job fair in my community, and the first year I had it, we hosted, it's our seventh or eighth one we've had now, the door, we were lined out the door with people basically almost begging in to find a job, this is 2011. Now we have less people in that line, but we have employers begging to get in to try to find workers. So just really interesting, interesting change. I am proud to see the two of my school districts and the third district, Olathe and Spring Hill, are part of the Kansas Can Program. And I'm also proud, and Kansas City Can has launched its Diploma Plus program, which will help ensure that students can set and meet goals that will lead them to success after high school. Students will attain a diploma as well as set and attain an additional goal. Some goals that they may select include completion on a four-year of college credit, a full, full year of college credit, completion of an industry-recognized certification or acceptance into the military. And so I continue to applaud your work at the state level, but also really anything we can do to continue to empower our local school districts to tailor-make and design programs that are the best fit for them, I think is a good direction for the state to head in, empowering districts, empowering local school boards, and frankly, we know our greatest success in education comes in which we have an engaged community, we have great teachers, and we have, you know, parents that are really involved in education, and of course, resources. And I'm not here to say that resources aren't necessary, it's part of making sure that we can fund the programs and the students. We appropriated $1.7 billion of resources to Perkins program. The President had suggested a $250 million cut, and we kept the funding flat. The state of Kansas received 10.2 million in Perkins grants in 2017. Other parts of the federal appropriations bill in 2017, student support and academic achievement state grants, $500 million, including 100 million in new funding, provide flexible funds to states and state districts to expand access, improve school conditions, and increase use of technology. The Trio and Gear Up programs, which help first-generation college students prepare for and enter and complete college, are increased by 60 million and 10 million respectively, bringing Trio programs over a billion and Gear Up to 350 million. Another area where I've really spent a focus on my time is on early childhood education, and that's also a part of, of this whole, you know, birth-to-graduation approach, and specifically our support for Head Start or preschool, to have access to quality childcare education programs, like Head Start, for example, to get caught up or ahead of their peers who don't have those benefits, to give them a chance to get caught up. Evidence shows that they stay ahead of the curve throughout their educational careers, and so that early childhood brain development. Head Start alumni are 31% less likely to be ahead in a grade. Head Start kids are 6% more likely to graduate high school. Early childhood education lays the foundation for a productive workforce. And so that's an area where I think we continue to be helpful at the federal level. We just increased Head Start federally by $22 million, and we increased the Child Care and Development Block grant by $4 million. Increased by about $1 billion since I came to Congress. I've also introduced a bill recently called the PACE Act, and the PACE Act would expand the childcare tax credit. And currently, we have a tax credit on the books to help parents pay for expenses of childcare. This allows working mothers, working fathers to have the opportunity to work outside the home if they need to or choose not to have a stay-at-home parent, that they can get some tax credit support for that. And so we increased that tax credit, and we also make it refundable, meaning for the first time, parents at the lower end of the economic spectrum can utilize that credit. To me, a credit, you have to make enough to be able to utilize it, really leaves people out at the lower income levels, and so we make this refundable. It's a bipartisan bill, we're working to get this included in tax reform. And so those are just some examples of areas where we have been, you know, specifically increasing budgets and expanding our support level. You mentioned Title I grants for disadvantaged students, we held that funding flat, so not a cut there. There, there was a cut that was recommended, and we held that remaining at 15.5 billion. And we actually also increased funding for IDEA, Special Education Grants to States, a $200 million increase over the year. And so those are examples, I think, where we have shown at the federal level our support for the work you're doing here. We know there are areas where I'm sure you would like us to improve or potential reductions, which from time to time concern the State School Board, and we're very sensitive to that. Part of the reason I'm here today is just to be a conduit for the work you're doing back in my community. I think it's really helpful if we sort of all know what we're doing at the federal, state, and local levels. And as someone who's a product of K through 12 and higher ed in Kansas, I've never attended anything other than public schools in Kansas, including my alma mater, and I know we don't show favoritism at the school board, but I'm a little bit of a favorite towards KU personally. But, you know, I, K through 12 and higher ed, I attended Kansas schools, so I'm a product of this, I, I believe in it. I utilize student loans to go to school, we're still paying our student loans, and I think there's a lot of, that ensures that everybody in our state, every child, has a chance to realize their dreams, and it really starts with the work you do here at the State Board of Education. I now have a one and three-year-old, and two little girls, and we're looking forward to sending them to public schools as well and giving them the same opportunities that I had and that we hope that future generations of children have. That's the future of Kansas. And so just here to lend my support for the work you're doing, encourage you, find ways which we can continue to collaborate and, and learn about our efforts jointly at the federal and state level, and just, I thank you for allowing me to sit upon your meeting here for a bit. And I really want to thank each one of you as State Board members, because I know you work hard, and you're away from home, and you're here in Topeka advocating on behalf of kids, and I know you can certainly appreciate the, the sacrifice that you're giving to make sure we have good schools in Kansas. I certainly appreciate it, and thank you for doing that. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. And since nobody submitted any questions after I make some remarks, and the handheld thing is off, so just raise your hand if you want to ask a question at that point. I serve on the Government Affairs Committee for the National Association of State Boards of Education, a month by phone, and so the last time we met, which was not yesterday, with a week from, I said, we're gonna meet with Representative Yoder, so do you have some things that, that maybe I should bring up? And the first thing they said was, thank him for Perkins, because that is a major, that is an issue, and, and it lends right into our vision. And as you said, according to our data, 71% of the kids, 71% of the jobs by 2020 are gonna require something above high school. About half of those are back, and about half of them are other programs that require something else. And so that Carl Perkins money really helps with that 35%, and that's something that's very momentous. First of all, and I'm sure you're not gonna get a single argument here about the importance of early childhood education. What we have been told and what some of us have observed is the largest gap in education at any point in the education process is the first day of kindergarten, where you have kids coming to school able to read on the second-grade level, or you have kids coming to school that don't know what blue is, and that is the biggest gap. And so early childhood education is a critical issue to help close that gap on kindergarten readiness. Two things, I want to commend our Kansas Legislature for doing two things this year, well, they did several that were, that were positive, but the two I want to mention specifically is that they restored funding for professional development. development, and they restored funding for mentoring. We have a crisis in Kansas of not having enough teachers. That's not always been the case. And one of the ways that we keep people in the classroom over a period of time is to have quality mentoring programs. And I'm told that in the House bill, not the Senate bill, but in the House bill, both professional development, Title II professional development, and the mentoring programs have been, have been zeroed out. We would, I would request that that be revisited if possible. I understand that they're both still in the Senate bill, and that was a week ago, so you guys may have done something else between now and then. But first of all, and for the board, I want, and it's, and it's, that is part of our vision, to keep quality people in the classroom, and that was also recognized by the Kansas Legislature. And we want to thank you for being here, and now I will open it up to my colleagues. It's Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Representative Yoder, for being here. Really appreciate it. Chairman Porter mentioned a couple of things I was going to mention as far as Perkins. Very critical, I represent the Wichita area. We were at Jim's conference just a couple weeks ago at the Wichita Area Technical College, and, you know, them talking about the fact that they can't find students to be able to go into the aircraft industry, and there's jobs there just waiting. So we're really going to begin to work with them and look at some things that we can do in that technical field, because there's jobs, good jobs, that are available. And then early childhood, I echo what Jim said about that, too. Jim mentioned the teacher shortage, you know, here on the board. We, just this year, and Sally Cobble and I sit on this committee, we established a Teacher Vacancy and Supply Committee. And so we're really looking at what are some of the issues, you know, it's nationwide, but what are some of the issues we're experiencing in Kansas? We had a Blue Ribbon Committee that Randy appointed, and they really did some research for us. And so we're really looking at what can we do? And the mentoring really is key, because what we're seeing is we're not necessarily seeing a graying of the profession, we're seeing a greening of the profession. So in other words, we're seeing lots of our young folks come in if they don't necessarily stay. So what can we do to help support them? So the mentoring's key, the continued professional development is key. Come out, you know, trained, but we lose a lot of them. Honestly, that probably contributes to a good amount of our shortage that we're seeing in Kansas, and I would guess maybe nationwide, too. I'm just not familiar with that. Another committee that I'm on is Mental Health Advisory Council that created to give recommendations to the board and then ultimately to the legislature, because we're really looking at that social-emotional as one of our goals. Randy showed that. And, you know, the way that that data's going to be looked at, it's going to be kept locally. But so we're really looking at with this Mental Health Advisory Council, it's a combination of school folks and mental health professionals from throughout the state. So there's 30 of us on this council, and we're working, meeting about once a month to come up with recommendations to present to the state board, because we're really seeing needs of a lot of our children really are significant. And so what can we do to help our students, to help our children, to help our parents? So those are some of the things that we're working on locally. And I'm pretty sure they're probably reflected nationally, too. So anything you can do to assist us in those special areas that we're kind of focusing on our, on our local board would be very helpful.
Well, Kathy, thank you for those comments. I had a chance recently to tour one of the aviation manufacturing facilities, one of the companies in Wichita, and they described some they have to try to find, you know, skilled workers on the floor. And they said one of the challenges they have is that folks are retiring, and they don't know who's going to come fill these spots. And of course, we want them to stay in Wichita. That's a huge source of jobs there. And so I commend you for your work there. On the teacher view, in terms of folks getting a teaching degree, going and teaching, and then leaving, are they leaving to go to other teaching jobs in other areas, or are they leaving for other professions, and do we know why? Is it a salary issue, or?
Well, we do have the data on it, and Randy actually has the data. Variety of reasons. Some of them leave to go to other districts, some of them leave to go to other states, but actually, we have more that come into the state than leave the state. So some folks say that people leave the state. Well, we have a lot that come in, too. But we've got a lot of, some people leave the profession, they get dis, or they find out that it's not for them. So it's really a variety of reasons. I don't know. Randy, you want to speak to that data?
It's a combination. I think a large part of it, you know, historically, for many, many years, if the teaching profession's a female-dominated profession, and females had about two opportunities outside the home, nursing and teaching, and that's totally changed, as it should be. And so they can look at other opportunities. That's one. Salary is important. It's only important, though, as it relates to what I think teachers would call a fair wage, and that's nebulous. But when it's in the low 30,000s and the insurance is high, that's tough. Now, you know, in this, that's much higher, but you branch out of that, and then where it's harder to get even people to go in Kansas, salaries are lower. And then honestly, you know, right or wrong, when there's a lot of discussion about what's wrong with education, and teachers, I think, generally feel like they're being blamed for that. So I say this a lot, and this is my remembrance and kind of a history. I remember when this country was divided over the Vietnam War, and we tended to blame GIs as they came home for that, which all they did was go serve their country. Watched our country learn from that and say, "Really? We're never going to do that again." And so I was just recently at an airport, and a GI got off the plane, and people stood and applauded, even if we may disagree about whether we should be in Afghanistan. I think, I think we're going to have to talk seriously about the value of teaching in this country, because if teachers, everyone here valued them in that way, and salaries were, I'm going to say, a little bit higher, you know, I think that would go a long way toward it. Respect for the profession again, for the hard work that they do. And I think they, I don't think it's individual, you know, like yourself. I think they pick up a media event, and they feel what they read.
I might follow up real quick with numbers. We talked about shortage. This was probably the first year we actually started the school year with 90 elementary vacancies. Now, in my years, and I worked in the school district for a long time.
In your district, or?
In the state.
In the state.
But we've always had special ed vacancies, but this was elementary. And this was, I mean, it was certainly in Western Kansas, a lot of Sally's district, but, you know, in the cities, Junction City, Wichita, you know. So we had a lot of elementary vacancies for one of the first times. And so we've seen some shortages. And Randy's spot on as far as, you know, what teachers feel, because we all talk to a lot of teachers. And, you know, teachers, it's their passion, but when they don't feel the value, and again, a little bit of extra salary, but when they don't feel the value, it's pretty disheartening. I mean, they're a good group of folks, but...
Is there underappreciation, sort of cultural feeling?
Yes, yes.
Janet? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to echo what they've said completely, but speaking of salaries, we do rank, as of last year, now, of course, it's one year back, and the legislature did put a little more money in this year. So, but last year, we ranked 42nd in the nation. Now, I don't know that we could ever be first, because let's face it, I know it costs a lot more in California and New York, but could we like be 25th, maybe? You know, but this, this respect, I have a daughter who's a teacher, and it's, and she teaches in a good school district. She's in Olathe, you know, and, but yet she says the lack of respect's unbelievable, you know, with the staff, from parents and community. Yeah, it's their fault. My daughter gets a lot of calls when the kids don't make decent grades, it's her fault, not the child. Give you some examples, but that's neither here nor there. She also had to take a second job, that's my daughter. And I've asked for data, but no one can seem to provide it, but you'd be shocked at how many teachers are having to take second jobs, you know, to make funding. But that, I wanted to say that, but I also wanted to add something else that hasn't been brought up. I've been appointed to the Juvenile Justice Committee. Frankly, I live in Wyandotte County, as you know, and the majority of those kids are mine, you know? And as a member of the Juvenile Justice Committee, excuse me, we have found, I had the one, I've found out a lot of things that kind of were shocking. But apparently, one-third of those children that are incarcerated, and this is not only the truth of apparently the youth, but also the adults, one-third have mental illnesses and should be in mental institutions, you know? And I think this is really tragic, but also, this committee, Kathy's serving on this Mental Health Committee, started not only because of the suicide and the bullying and all this, but we had a report, what, two or three months ago, on trauma. And I think this just really upset me, you know, about trauma children are facing today. It has grown exponentially. Apparently, children are entering kindergarten with trauma. Children are entering kindergarten who are afraid of teachers, and poverty is a trauma. And frankly, our teachers are not trained, once again, to the professional development. Our teachers, the current teachers were never trained. This trauma has grown over experience had, not only the little ones, but I mean, the older ones, of course, and that's the reason a lot of them are incarcerated. So anyway, those are some of the things I wanted to share with you. Thank you.
Representative Yoder, I really appreciate you being here. And I know that I don't have anybody in here, because I have the very rural and frontier area. I'm in Dr. Marshall's area. And I've got quite a few of the big problems, okay? When you want to talk about teacher shortage, once we get them trained, they go your way. You know, we've got this mass exodus to the eastern part of the state. But also, I have the migrant population, and I'm on the Interstate Migrant Board. And the state of Kansas will be receiving migrant dollars because we have fewer migrant workers than we used to. It doesn't mean we have fewer migrant jobs. And I was at one meeting in which we have the land, but we don't have the workers. And so that's a complication, which moves me into, and I'm not going to talk about it one way or the other, but the DACA is so vital for our part of the state, and it has become that issue because it the racism that's raising its ugly head because of the misinformation that is put out. It is very difficult to live in our part of the world. But he's come in with some awesome programs that he's got in the state when he was other state colleges to help our paras become a two-plus-two, which is awesome. But these paras don't even have the money to go to the community college. The community colleges give scholarships, but it seems everybody wants to give the scholarship, even through the Perkins, for the people that are full-time students. What about the people that are trying to lift themselves out of poverty? We have four-year degree people that are willing to go into the classroom and become our teachers out there. In fact, that's a big way that we're getting our positions filled. But then again, they're not getting paid a full salary to do that. They still have the cost of education. So I think we need to look at some of our scholarship money, some of our Perkins money a little differently to make sure the people that need it can qualify for it. The second thing on that, wait a minute, I'm going to, I lost my train of thought here. I told you about the paras, I told you about the four-year degree people. Oh, darn, I had one more good point.
We can come back.
Thank you, Steve Roberts, Overland Park, Kansas.
Yes, I'm one of my constituents.
Well, I rode Kevin's coattails in 2012. I'm the lead engineer on this moonshot by default, because I think I'm the only engineer. So I'm the worst engineer on the moonshot, and I'm the best. Sort of like Kansas City Star is the best newspaper I ever worked for, it's also the worst, because it's the only one. So as we take our moonshot, I'm inclined to say things to sort of move the ball down the field, that we should eliminate the federal free and reduced lunch program and not care how much money kids folks make. But I'm told in the department and also on this board that we have to keep it, because we need the money. So we've got these federal strings that we have to adhere to. I would like to eliminate the federal free and reduced lunch program and replace it with lunch. You send your kids to school, they get lunch. But I would also like, I would also like to do away with federal regulations that suggest we should continue to label our kids by race, because I think we've reached a point in society where we use race as an excuse. We say, hey, we have this poorly performing school over here, but, oh, it's 59% African-American, 22% Hispanic, and society kind of shrugs its shoulders. I think we So as Betsy DeVos tries to push for school choice for poor kids, and that was brought up earlier today, I was reminded that we have school choice for everyone. We just don't, we don't push it as much as we should. So my, my take on this, thank you for your involvement at your level, but also to thank the current administration for pushing for change that would include pushing initiatives back to the states, which started in the Obama administration. And as Betsy DeVos pushes charter schools, I know that there's a stronger push for choice for all kids, because if we continue to have choice only for the affluent, I think we will continue to risk losing this country. So if we have choice for all, and we let families choose where their kids go to school, I think we'll have a come for most kids.
It was really important, too, because it piggybacked on Kathy. You'll love it. That professional development and that mentor piece is for my, so when I saw that struck, I almost called a few people, but I didn't. It's vital for my area. And, you know, even if you just want to make it necessary for rural areas or frontier areas, that's and on a thing on he said, you know, some of my children, without the federal school lunch, would not have any lunch. They would have not any food.
Our districts compare, because I do represent all of them. Sally and I have an awful lot in common, honestly.
Rural and urban.
Well, yeah, yeah, and at our at-risk. I have a lot of family support with the at-risk I have. They're good families, they do a lot for families. They're very concise, where a lot of hers are in jail. Don't have that.
I have, I have single homes where she has
I just have poverty, unbelievable poverty. That I, I used to be in Memphis, and we lived across the street from the projects. And I tell you, you've seen that and had to work in that environment, I don't think you really know what poverty is. Kansas doesn't have the poverty that some states have. But I tell you, some of my areas are so close to that, it would make you cry.
Well, if I might, Mr. Chairman, certainly very well aware and heartbroken about the number of children in our state are in poverty, and that in many cases, the only nutritious meals they get are the meals you all are providing, that we provide through the federal program. In many cases, that breakfast and lunch, you know, many schools have, and I've helped pack them before, you know, the weekend backpack programs, because if not, they're not getting meals throughout the weekend. And it's heartbreaking to think about, children that don't have that. I will say, I was on free and reduced lunch as a farm kid in Reno County, growing up. I will say, I was on free and reduced lunch as a farm kid in Reno County, growing up, and so, it's an important program to me personally, because I grew up with it, benefited from it. Yeah, so, thank you for your comments.
I'll echo the thanks of our board for you showing up and staying here. Good job.
Well, I'm only committed till five, so...
We control the locks.
He hasn't noticed we've changed him to his chair yet.
Well, we have the locks, we can, and the keys. I'm going to take a little bit different perspective here. We've talked about DACA, we've talked about choice, we've talked about the teacher shortage. One of the most important things that Washington does is the narrative that's going to be a part of our, our state and across our nation. And in my role, I've been here on the board now for, you know, five years, and in that five years, I've also been the national chairman for the National Association of State Boards of Education. So, I get a little more of a national perspective than I probably would if I was here. But I'm going to just take a moment and say, the teacher shortage, one of the things that's already been brought up is the fact that we're not talking nice about education. We're not talking about, it's already been brought up about, we're not talking nice about, they're the solution, they're not the problem. And we have to change the narrative. And the narrative coming from Secretary DeVos and from our president has not been positive about public schools. I don't know if they are doing that deliberately because they don't like us, or don't understand us, or haven't experienced us, or if it is an agenda that is going another way. I'd like to make the more positive position and think that they just don't know us very well, you know, because neither had been involved with public education. But that narrative that's coming out, when bully pulpit is one of how much more choice you know, for kids to leave public schools, and, you know, how bad are the teachers, and how bad are things going in schools, when actually, in Kansas, and quite frankly, across the nation, we're all trying to do better, you know? And I would like to see a narrative come out of Washington that is much more education, because when it all comes down to it, with all the choice they're talking about, whether it's, you know, providing choices, Steve has said, and by the way, I've been a choice, I've been a principal in a Catholic school, I started a magnet school, okay? I've been in choice, and I'm all for choice, but the bulk of it is going to be in our, in schools. And when I was at Catholic school, they used to say, well, we're much better than the public schools. And I said, well, we better hope not, because our future's really in the public schools. No, because if we have, we have bad public schools, we have a bad country, okay? We're not in the right path. So, I don't have a problem talking about choice and providing choice at the poverty, if for kids that are in poverty, or for kids that are rich. But I don't want to make that a choice where it's running away from something as much as it's going to something that's personally needed in my family and in my values, or you know, that public school is an equal choice. So, I would encourage you to, at some point, if you could, in your conversation with your peers, in conversation with the education people, maybe even DeVos, you know, we need cheerleaders for us as well, you know, and still going to be dealing with 91, 90 to 92% of the students regardless of what choice systems we put in. So, let's make the best we can out of our public schools, and let's make it as Kansas has, because our vision is that Kansas leads the world in the success of each child. It didn't say public schools, it said each student, and we're committed to that. We want to see excellent private schools, excellent homeschools, we want to see excellent education for our students and our citizens of our state and nation. So, it would be nice if somebody became a cheerleader for us, you know? I just don't see that. I don't feel it. You know, and, and it's not, I don't think, I'm, I'm an optimist, it's not that they're trying to, you know, remove us, but, you know, we need great public schools to be a great country, and we need options and choices, too. Thank you.
Well, just, just to pick up on what Jim is saying, I think that the choice within the public realm should be part of the future as well. It's not choosing public or private, or public or parochial, but choice within the public sphere should be part of our future. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
And we believe that by developing a, developing an individual student, we can, our time has expired, we have, I want to again thank you on behalf of the board for being here. Well, Deana has a question, she's giving me the glare, so I guess I better...
That's all right. Dean and I served in the state legislature together, it's good to see you.
We certainly did. And I want to first say thank you for taking time to come. When I first started teaching, there was a federal program which gave half, that had to do with providing of, when you had a loan, you got, if you taught a year, you got up to five years, you got, and I think there are several of us that probably started that way, and it was at a time when we desperately needed teachers. So, you might look back in the, the covey holes of, of DC and see if you can find that law, because it, it was very helpful to me, and I will tell you that I probably would not have stayed in teaching for as long as I did if I hadn't have started that. And for, by five years, they had me hooked. It's a positive.
If you teach in Title I?
It was a...
My daughter-in-law has that.
I think it exists for some schools now, but it used to be for schools.
You could just say District Five.
No.
The Kansas State Board.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just make a closing remark? Okay, well, you don't have a, haven't banged the gavel yet there, I guess, but, look, listen, I want to really thank you all for your comments. It's been very instructive and informative, and, and, you know, Jim, to your point, let me start right now by saying thank you to all of the folks that help run the State Department of Education, and a heartfelt thank you to every teacher who, right now, at five o'clock, is working on tomorrow's lessons plan and, and trying to figure out how to get the room back in order, and get supplies for the next day, grading papers, and taking work home. Let me say on behalf of, you know, myself and the folks I represent, that they probably don't hear it enough, but Kansans really appreciate our teachers, and probably every single one of us, and everyone we know, has a teacher that they could name immediately that had a very significant role in what they decided to do for a career, and the choices they made, and the, the character they've built. And so, teachers are critical to all this, and when you talk about 90 teacher shortages and the factors that go into that, you know, we want to, I want to be helpful. I want Kansas to have some of the best schools in the country. I want them to move and live here, because they know it's a great place to bring their children. That's part of our heritage, and I think it's part of our future. And I want America to be the best place to get an education in the world. And so, that does require leadership at all levels, and I'm hopeful to provide that leadership on your behalf continually at the, at the federal level. You know, my girl was in a one-room schoolhouse until eighth grade, and then, you know, she was needed on the farm, so she didn't go forward, and all the grades were in the same room, and, and they didn't deal with some of the mental health challenges that you're speaking about, that you all have to deal with today. They don't, they didn't deal with some of the broken home challenges that we have to deal with. And so, I know you're on the front lines of a lot more than our parents and grandparents' generations had to deal with challenges at the school level, and that requires resources, it requires leadership and community engagement, and it requires good planning on behalf of our state board and our local boards. And so, Commissioner, I want to thank your team here for the Kansas Can Project, and the personalization, and the intentionality of focusing on the needs and challenges that our kids will face in the, in the economy of the future, and making sure that they're here, that the families want to come here, and that the businesses follow, because they know we have some of the best talent. So, thank you for what you do, and I remain a steadfast partner, and I wish you all good luck. All right.
We will finish, we will reconvene in 10 minutes. So, sorry I stopped you in the middle of sentence, Mr. Dennis.
Well, I told you all I knew anyway, Mr. Chairman.
Discuss the Supreme Court decision again, and this is, I can't tell anybody what to do, but I think it's probably real important for us to remain uninvolved in the court discussion. You know, our job was to make recommendations, and we did, were cited, budget recommendations were cited. It's the court's job to make the decision they did, it's the court's job to maintain jurisdiction, it's the legislator's job to fix it, and I think that it would behoove us to let them do their jobs if they ask us questions. If, if legislators ask for our input, I think that that's acceptable, but anybody else, I would encourage us to remain silent and just simply say that's the court and the legislature's position, that responsibility, and we will support what they decide.
Mr. Chairman, I might just add that I think there's a, and I hope this happens, they'll have a bill on equity, the cleanups, the equity, and then there'll be a separate bill on the adequacy on the money, because of... And so, that's got a different route than the adequacy piece, or the equity piece. And the equity piece is things that are easily solvable, and it should not be much discussion about that. We hope they do that, because there are several things there that would be helpful to get that done quickly. So, I hope they do that on the adequacy piece, and that's a legislative matter.
Anything else?
I just, just reminder again that I think that they'll be taking up the legislature will, they put it on, was very little discussion, on the bond cap, and what buildings cost 25 years ago or 20 years ago, a little different than they are, what it costs today. And so, I think it also, some of that's tied to economic development. And so, I, I think that that's going to be discussed again. They come up with it in the last day or two of the session, wasn't much hearings or discussion on it, and I think that'll be re-discussed because of, well, just what happened. We capped out.
And if I'm not mistaken, whether or not you get state aid is immaterial to that law.
That's correct.
So, we're, even though we're approving those, that are simply the vote, the decision of the voters of that district with no state involvement, still counts against the cap.
Yeah. Anytime you go above the 14%, that counts. The only other, so if you're, if a district less than the 14%, the cap don't kick in till you go above 14%, but, which most of them do, because that, that provision's older than Methuselah. And then, the other provision is, if you haven't had an election approved for, for issued bonds for 25 years, well, there isn't very many school districts that's going to be issuing bonds of any, any amount that hadn't had an election in 25 years. But in the growing areas, I think, I think you're going to start to see some growth in suburban Sedgwick, suburban, in the, in the area of Johnson County, part of Wyandotte County, you're going to see growth. And I think it, there'll be some districts growing over there this year, I think it will, and I think, I think that's, quality of education, I think, has an effect on, on economic development, where people live, where they choose to live, and so...
If the goal was to stabilize what the, what the state is going to, which is, I think was the goal, then wouldn't it have been logical to apply that cap only to those schools that are going to require state aid?
Well, yeah, but you got a discrimination problem, then equity issue, and they didn't want to do that, so there, that was, it was explained that way, I was told, a little bit, like you said, but that isn't what the bill says. And so, but, the other issue that some have forgotten, July 1 of 15, we changed the formula for state aid for bonds, we dropped it about 20 to 25 percentage points, but all the bonds prior to that is under the old law. Remember, we had quite a few bond issues in June, May and June of 15? Well, we'll be paying on those for 20, 20-some years, so we're paying for those now, but the new bonds, the rates are down considerably down. Most of them are running, see, I think Craig, why, 3 to 25%? Yep. So, for, and what it does for some districts, when you went, you dropped it, they don't get state aid. What you did, we didn't, this wasn't discussed for a minute, you just pushed it to the property tax, that's what you did. Nobody else left. Pushed it to the property. So, anyway, I think that they'll take that back up, because...
And we know that one school district is now requesting more than we have the authority to approve.
Yep, and they know it.
Are there other school districts that are in that pipeline?
Well, there's, not yet, but there will be more that will be coming in in the spring. See, here we are, we're not halfway through the year, and we've capped out, and a lot of them had their bond issues to do it in November, at the elections, in order to be more frugal and efficient and save money. But there'll be, there's another one that we'll have to come back to you, too, that, where the law changed July 1 on state aid. And for example, after, any elections after July 1 of 17, we, we can't pay anything on sports facilities unless it's to meet ADA. So, you got to evaluate each one of them. We, you've approved one or two of those on a, we had to reduce it, and we'll have some more coming in, like, we'll have to reduce it. So, it's a...
And what is the, is it based on the calendar year or the fiscal year?
Fiscal year.
Okay.
Fiscal year. And so, there's another cap out there to a six-year rolling average, but that's not an issue anymore, it won't be an issue. You got all those bonds prior July 1 of 15, and some of those, we're just now starting to pay for it in the fall of 17, you with me? You got to build it, issue the bonds and all that, so, the bottom line is, that will be another issue that legislature will have to deal with, that they put in, but I don't think they realize the seriousness of it and the effect of it, because we have one big district, I wouldn't want to say where it is, but not too far from you, that they're, they're talking about, they're growing, and they're talking about another bond issue. And when they have a bond issue, just for one building, they issue bond, get permission to issue the bonds, then they issue them as they need them, based on the economy and the interest rates and all that. And Randy just found out what another district over in that area, why they're looking, talking about a bond issue. So, there'll be more issues, and what we can say yes or no is going to depend upon what happens to the November elections. I shouldn't say this, probably jokingly, we had one that said I should go there and campaign, campaign against that, because if it fails, then I get to recover my bond issue.
But Dale, for the boards, even if some do fail, and Derby comes on, we're right back in the same place coming to spring, whenever these others try to go, so...
So, it depends on...
It's going to collide, just a matter of when.
All of them could pass, and if so, Derby's going to sit there, and they're going to sit there at least till July.
And we approve on the order that they were submitted to us?
We, we bring them to you, and the order, we get them. We get, we had some, can I do this, can I, you know, no? First come, first served. You have to do that. If you don't do that, you got trouble in River City. Can I call and tell you I'm going to do it? No. It's when you, when the application arrives, that's when it goes on the market. So...
Any other questions?
Just how many dollars are we talking about in November?
Craig, what would you say, there's about eight, 10 of them? And what do you reckon we'd get? Couple, couple hundred million?
There's 321, and we've got a hundred...
Yeah, 3, 320, yeah, about 200 million. That's close, 190. But see, on a statewide basis, that sounds like a lot, and it is under their formula, but on a statewide basis, it's not that big a deal. but on a statewide basis, it's not that big a deal. Yep.
And.
Is it likely that that cap is going to be addressed?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, because the right people have the problem. The right people have the problem. They do. Sedgwick, Johnson, and so it'll, think about, there's a lot of people involved in that, so I think it'll do, sure do. And I, we've already talked to a few legislators about it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, we appreciate it, everybody. Thanks for your time.
Do you want to talk about legislative issues today or tomorrow during the report? Okay. Dina, you're not giving me that glare this time.
Well, I passed out something that was given to me during one of our breaks from Gaila Randall, Randall. She brought this so that you would have the CTE scholar overview, and then on the backside is her contact information, and she said you need to contact her if you have questions. So she seemed to be out of town, I think, this, during this week, she said, but you could. She still checks her email, and so you can get in touch with her, so.
Thank you for.
Yes, you're very welcome. I was afraid I'd lose it or walk home with it if I didn't hand it out.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls? Nine o'clock in the morning, have a great evening.